I'm not officially yet calling the meeting to order. We don't have other council members, but we have some new people in the room. And so I wanted to point out that we are all wearing ribbons in honor of Tyler Skaggs, who's a Santa Monica native who sadly passed away while playing for the Angels. And we have, if you would like to wear a ribbon in honor of Tyler, we have them in the basket here at the clerk's desk, so feel free to come up and grab one if you would like. And yes, you Yankees, you can come up and get ribbons if you like. Please do, if it's all right with your coaches. We will be adjourning in Tyler's memory tonight, but we wanted to do this special thing. He was such a wonderful part of this community, and we wanted to give that special acknowledgement. I should just give this to you. You should go do this. You should go do this. I should just give this to him.
Please, please.
Oh, God, no.
You know I don't have lice.
It's not the lice I'm worried about. All right, wonderful. Well, it looks like we are all here now, so we are going to call the meeting back to order. We apologize for being late, but our closed session was lengthier than we anticipated, not due to anything the city attorney did, but due to a Yankee council. So I believe we need a report from closed session before we continue.
Items 1A and 1B were discussed with no reportable action taken. Item 1C was not discussed. Item 1D was discussed with no reportable action taken. Item 1E is Arbabi versus City. Ms. Arbabi filed this lawsuit after falling on a big blue bus and suffering injuries. The city attorney's office disputes and denies many of the claims in the case, but recommends settlement tonight in the amount of $49,000.
I move settlement in the Arbabi case for $49,000.
Second.
Wait, you said? I, but he said, okay. I second it.
All right.
Forty-nine thousand.
He did say forty-nine thousand. All right, so moved by Winterer, seconded by Himmelrich. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Morena?
Yes.
Councilmember Himmelrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Winterer?
Yes.
Councilmember Har?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim O'Day?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes, that passes unanimously, six-zero.
Item 1F is Quintero versus City. Mr. Quintero and his wife filed this case after a tragic incident at a construction site in Los Angeles involving a big blue bus driving over a metal water crossing which dislodged at the construction site. Mr. Quintero suffered very serious injuries in this case. The city attorney's office disputes and denies many of the claims in this case, but we are ultimately recommending settlement in this case in the amount of $4.75 million.
Now, I will move we settle the Quintero case for $4.75 million.
Second.
All right, moved by Winterer, seconded by Himmelrich. May we have a roll call vote?
Mayor Pro Tim O'Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Har?
Yes.
Councilmember Winterer?
Yes.
Councilmember Himmelrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Morena?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes, that also passes unanimously, six-zero.
Items 1G and 1H were discussed with no reportable action taken. Item 1I is 2701 Barnard Way. This item was not discussed in closed session tonight, but the city attorney's office does have an agreement to report out in open session with the Sea Colony Homeowners Association. Pursuant to the agreement, the Sea Colony HOA will be allowed to maintain a 600-foot city-owned walkway locked from dusk to dawn in exchange for the HOA accepting full responsibility for landscaping, maintenance costs, and indemnification of any risks or harms associated with the walkway. So the city attorney's office is recommending that settlement with respect to 2701 Barnard Way.
I move approval of that agreement.
Second.
All right, moved by Himmelrich, seconded by Morena, because Councilmember Winterer has a Yankees hat on. No offense, young men. Moved by Himmelrich, seconded by Morena, may we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Councilmember Morena?
Yes.
Councilmember Himmelrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Winterer?
Yes.
Councilmember Har?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim O'Day?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes, that also passes unanimously, six-zero.
That concludes the closed session report.
Thank you very much. We now move on. I have to look at my cheat sheet here. We are going to move on to item two, but before we do, Madam Clerk, do we need to take a vote to fulfill staff's request that item 3J be pulled, or is it just sufficient that staff has requested it be pulled?
It's sufficient to just pull it.
So I just want to notify people, item 3J, if you were going to speak to that, has been pulled. And also, at the appellant's request, item 6B will be continued. So if you were here for 808 Wood Acres, that matter is going to be continued to another date. All right, not seeing anyone getting up and rushing out of the room, I'll assume nobody was here for that. Now we get to do the fun stuff, which is the AAA Division Yankees. Yay! So I'm going to come down here and tell you all why we are celebrating the Yankees tonight. The Santa Monica Little League AAA Yankees had a magical season that I think every one of these players are going to remember. It started their season going one-three in the first four games, but they kept practicing hard, they persevered, and they won their next four games in a row, and again would never have a record below 500 for the rest of the season. In their second-to-last game of the season, they faced an undefeated Angels team with a record of 15-0 and with only two games left in their season. The Yankees handed the Angels their only loss of the season by a score of nine to eight, and won their last game against the A's to finish the season two games above 500. Woo! Oh, but there's more. As the fifth seed out of eight teams in the playoffs, the Yankees then went on to win five of their six playoff games, losing only once to the Angels. They beat the Cubs 15-9, good thing Councilmember O'Connor's not here, she's a Cubs fan, to send them to the bottom playoff bracket. They beat the Pirates 15-3 to knock them out of the playoffs. They beat the Cubs again 6-4 to knock them out of the playoffs. Then on May 28, they faced the Angels again in the semifinals. In this do-or-die game, every player on the Yankees got at least one hit and got on base at least twice against some of the best pitchers in the league. The team batted around the entire order in two separate innings. Their defensive play in the field was just as spectacular with amazing plays and catches. The Angels, who had a record of 18 wins and only two losses, lost to the Yankees that day by a score of 18 to four and were knocked out of the playoffs. Then on June 1, the Yankees faced the A's in the championship game. It was a back-and-forth strunkle, but the Yankees showed grit, determination, and, as they had all season, pulled away to win the championship by a score of 10 to 6. The AAA Yankees displayed great sportsmanship throughout the season. They were gritty but classy. They grew to understand what it means to be great team players and the importance of supporting each other. And everyone on the team, we hope, had fun, y'all got better at the game, and in the end they won a championship which they will remember, I guarantee you, for the rest of your lives. So tonight we have representatives from the Santa Monica Little League 2019 AAA Division Championship Yankees. Receiving commendations this evening include Councilmember Ted Winter, who is wearing an honorary Yankees hat, Scott Stoddard, the head coach, Carrie Jackson, the assistant coach, Scott Benoit, the assistant coach, David Patelson, or Patterson, I apologize for the mispronunciation, assistant coach, Brian Grossman, assistant coach, but more importantly, the players who showed heart through all the season, Harland Mansfield, Eli Jackson, Merrick Grossman, Jonas Becker, Nico Benoit, Reese Engelmann, Logan Patelson, Lucas Barber, Jack Stoddard, Chase Fladus, and Adam Orshansky. Let's give them all a big hand. So we have commendations for each of them. I'm not going to open them, so they'll stay nice in the envelope, but Coach, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Sure. You can all come up and stand around him. All right, guys. They've heard this already before, but I'm extremely proud of this team. As the mayor mentioned, they start out 1-3, but they practice really hard, they're really determined, and they did fantastic. And I mentioned to them a few times throughout the season that the most important thing for me was that they displayed good sportsmanship and learned how to be good team players. That was number two, and they really excelled at that. I never had to talk to any of them about sportsmanship. They got to be really good team players and really supporting their team, cheering them out for the dugout by the end of the season. They were just fantastic teammates for each other. And, you know, I told them, in the end, maybe we'll learn something about the game and maybe we'll win a few games, too. And we sure did that. So I'm extremely proud of these guys. Congratulations again. This is your championship, and savor it forever.
All right. We have pictures to be taken. Come on, guys. Normally, don't get to come in the well. And normally, I'm usually the shortest person. I usually, Coach, I opened yours just so someone can hold this to show that we have been given commendations. All right, who wants to hold the commendations? All right, excellent. In fact, you can all hold it if you want. All right, this is Councilmember Winterer. I understand that on three, we're going to say, "Go Yankees!" One, two, three.
Go Yankees!
Thank you for coming out. Congratulations. Congratulations. Look forward to seeing you next year when we do it again, okay? All right? All right, promise you're going to have fun? Excellent, excellent. Good job. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming out. Thank you. Thank you. Make sure you've got all the commendations. We have one for each of them. Yep, there you go. All right, thank you very much. All right, it's all downhill from here. All right, I think the clerk has a question to ask the rest of us?
Yes, do councilmembers have any brief reports on travel since the last meeting?
All right, I do. I attended the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and don't all get all weepy for me, in Honolulu, Hawaii. It was very enlightening. I got to deal with a lot of my colleagues from many other cities, both across the United States, but particularly in California. And I won't go into all the gory details, but prior to going, I had received a lot of input from our community members about supporting the idea of a carbon tax, which is part of our city adopted Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. And I was proud to the General Assembly to make the motion to pass that, or actually I seconded the motion to pass that and led the vote, which was a unanimous vote in favor of that. So the U.S. Conference of Mayors does support the idea of a carbon tax, which hopefully will be one of the ways we will not only reduce our dependence on carbon in the long run, but find a way to fund the adaptation that will be necessary by climate change. So it was a wonderful conference. I'm glad I went, and I really didn't get much time on the beach, so you should feel sorry for me. Anyone else? All right, thank you. We'll move on then.
Consent calendar. All items will be considered and approved in one motion unless removed by a council member for discussion. And we have five members of the public to speak.
All right, Councilmember Har, you're in the queue. Oh, we're going to do public, we'll do public comment, and then you can tell us which ones you need to pull. All right, so I'm going to call all five names. For those of you who are not familiar with our procedures, we will ask you to line up along the wall to my right, your left, so that we can move seamlessly from one speaker to the next. Our speakers are Denise Barton, Nancy Coleman, Neil Cohen, Mindy Beardsley, and Jerry Bass.
Good evening. Let's start with your amended LUP submission to the Coastal Commission. May I say this should have been its own item considering the intricacies of the changes needed to be made, but I want to emphasize some of the things you're agreeing to. Although I do have to ask if your submission of available parking, did you include tonight's action in item 3F, removing parking structure three? Or did you include the fact that people have stopped coming here due to lack of parking? Or where will all the new mixed-use buildings you've approved, are the employees supposed to park? But at least you're agreeing to 70-foot height for the large sites and are finally willing to take into account the view of the coast, which you seemed unwilling to do previously, as with the Arc Light Theaters at the top of Santa Monica Place. And there's so much more I can't get to. Next, why would the city need a consultant for groundwater sustainability plan? Or would this be anything like the downtown Santa Monica Inc.'s TDM craft account, which is done Friday evenings when Jewish people don't drive? Just so you understand my concerns. In addition, doesn't anything the city hires to consult for in reality become skewed more and more? Considering many reactions of approving so many new hotels and restaurants, that true water self-sufficiency has now become an image, as is most everything else in the city, and not how it actually is, just like your last submission to the Coastal Commission in 1992 was never fully approved, but the city's image was as though it was approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Coleman?
Hi, I'm Nancy Coleman. I live at 349 Euclid Street. While I am a member of the Social Services Commission, and we looked at this issue last year, that is, I'm looking at item zero, oh, rather, the transmittal of the DA report. I am so concerned about this report. Number one, we had asked, that is, the Social Services Commission and others had asked last year that the elements within the report, in addition to the TDMs and others, be elucidated in the report prior to its being accepted. As I went through the attachment for this year's report that is now before you to accept on a consent calendar, there are items that are last year's report, 2017 reports, not 2018 reports, given to the staff in March of 2018. In particular, the Providence St. John's is there. Providence St. John's provides innumerable, or says that they provide innumerable, community benefits, yet the community benefits stated in their report to the city, which the city and today's Santa Monica, or yesterday's Santa Monica Daily Press said, "All development agreements in compliance according to the annual report." How can a 2017 report be in compliance with the 2018 requirement? Again, these are things which I ask that the planning staff, in coordination with the other departments, because there are housing issues, there are childcare issues, there are rec and perks issues, be coagulated such that you know exactly what has been done in each successive year in DAs.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Neil Cohen?
Hi, I'm Neil Cohen, 31-years resident on California Avenue, and I'm not the NIMBY guy. I publicly supported here the transitional homeless housing directly across the alley from where I live and my family, as well as the low-income senior housing around the corner from me, our other neighbors. I've been on a book tour, and after waiting over a year of last-minute cancellations, I cannot attend the May meeting about rescinding the landmarking of my other neighbor, the Grand California Sycamore on California Avenue. Landmarking that tree was not an open-the-floodgates issue. This tree is unique. Landmarking it set a bar few, if any, trees on private land could attain. Your vote to rescind the landmarking was not only disrespectful to the city's entirely carefully considered landmark process, but as I warned in my correspondence to this council, each of you who voted to rescind the landmarking was actively voting to cut down that tree. From my review of the May transcript, there was an agreement that in return for overturning the landmarking, the property owners would sign a deed restriction stating that for two years they would not cut down that tree, and that they would sign that deed restriction within two weeks. Yet they've refused to sign that agreement. Folks, it doesn't take over two months to write, quote, "We, the property owners, agree for two years not to kill the tree," and yet they haven't done that. So you should not uphold your decision supporting the property owners and their dishonesty and theatrics throughout this entire process. I ask you not to agree to consent to rescind the landmark status of that legendary Sycamore tree. The deal, deed restriction, was not signed. Please deny consent and recalendar the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Mindy Beardsley?
Hi, Mindy Beardsley at 1106 California Avenue. I am here to discuss 3I Appeal 18 ENT 140, the landmarked Sycamore tree. As of yesterday, it is my understanding from the city attorney, Matsumoto, the appellant for this appeal has failed to sign the agreed-upon to-year deed restriction. Because of this, I respectfully ask you to deny consent and recalendar or continue until the deed restriction has been signed. If there is a way to reinstate the landmark status, that would be even better. It was my understanding from the council that they don't want the tree to be cut down, and giving the deed restriction option to the family would protect the tree until the PTO ordinance, the private tree ordinance, is in effect. So if this family decides to sell this home, or do a property swap, or anything like this without this deed restriction, there will be no recourse, and you know the tree will be cut down. So please, I ask that you do not consent, and you recalendar or continue, or deny their appeal completely and reinstate landmark status. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Bass?
Good evening, Jerry Bass, 16, Seaview Terrace. I'm asking you here tonight to remove item 3E, specifically number four and five of 3E, from the consent calendar for further study and neighborhood outreach. I just heard about this issue at 5:00 today. I'm not as organized as I might have been, but I'm a property owner on Seaview Terrace, and I would like to know a couple things. Number one, how far south of the pier is the business improvement district going to I'm not a business, I own a home. Am I going to be subject to the leveling of a tax or an improvement charge for something I really don't even know at this point what is going to be done and what is going to be done with that money? I really need to understand what's involved before I can support an assessment and exactly what that assessment will do. So far, I feel that to charge neighbors for an assessment to fix what the city broke doesn't make much sense to me. I've lived in my house for 35 years. The city's programs so far have only damaged my neighborhood, and I have no historical reason to believe that this assessment is going to do otherwise. So again, I ask you to remove item four and five, 3E, from the consent calendar for further discussion and neighborhood outreach to understand what this program is and what neighbors will be involved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, that concludes the public comment. The matter is now before the council. I think Councilmember Har, you had buzzed in earlier, so I'm going to give you first rights, and then we'll go down the list.
Thank you. I'd like to pull item 3N, please.
N as in Nancy?
Yes.
All right, Councilmember Morena?
I'd like to pull 3E and recuse myself from it because I have a business on the Santa Monica Pier. I don't want any conflicts.
All right. Councilmember Himmelrich?
I'd like to pull 3I and 3O.
All right, why don't we do 3E first, so that Councilmember Morena can leave, and then he can return for the rest of the evening's festivities? All right, council matter 3E is before us.
3E, Pier Business Improvement and Oceanfront Property Improvement Districts.
And so should I, I move 3E.
All right.
Second.
All right, moved by Himmelrich, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim O'Day. May we have a roll call vote, please? Oh, did, oh, Ted, I'm sorry, Councilmember Winterer.
I, just since one speaker raised a question about this, I thought I'd check with staff and clarify my understanding. This is just allocation of funds for feasibility study of these improvement districts, and that anybody who might be potentially in those districts will have the opportunity to vote yea or nay on them in the future. So, because the democratic process involves certain majority thresholds, isn't that correct?
Councilmember and Mayor Jason Harris, City's Economic Development Manager. In response to your queries regarding the proposed studies of either both a pier business improvement district as well as a beachfront property assessment district, your assumptions are correct. These are prospective studies that we're seeking council authorization. As you know, the pure bid has gone through feasibility, and now this is moving into formation. The beachfront properties, there have been some property owners that expressed some interest, so these are, this action before tonight is to prospectively fund a feasibility analysis of a business improvement, or a property-based improvement district along the beachfront with the assumption that there is property owner support. And so our next steps will be conducting outreach and discussions with property owners to see if there's interest to even conduct the studies. And then if there is interest to conduct the studies, there is the formalized process that you alluded to, that property owners would be voting in support of formation if we even get to that point.
Or this gentleman, since he might vote against it, but he has that opportunity down the road, should we get to that point?
Correct.
Great, thank you. Clarification.
All right, we'll go back. I think we had the motion moved by Himmelrich, seconded by O'Day. Can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Himmelrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Winterer?
Yes.
Councilmember Har?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim O'Day?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes, that passes unanimously, five-zero. All right, let's have Councilmember Morena return. All right, before we hear the pulled items, I'll entertain a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar, which is a consent calendar minus items 3J, 3I, 3N, and 3O.
Second.
Moved by Winterer, seconded by O'Day. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tim O'Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Har?
Yes.
Councilmember Winterer?
Yes.
Councilmember Himmelrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Morena?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes, that passes unanimously, six-zero. So we have the three remaining pulled items. Let's start with item 3N, since Councilmember Har pulled that, and then the next two were pulled by Councilmember Himmelrich.
Hi, I just, I wanted to see if you could...
Yeah, she needs to call out the...
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
Item 3N, authorized acceptance of the 2018 Urban Area Security Initiative grant funds for homeland security projects and enter into a sub-recipient agreement with the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you for coming. I, the reason why I pulled it is because I just wanted to make sure that you could give us a public statement of what it is that those funds would be used for. Given the climate that we have right now, I just wanted to ensure some of our residents that this has got nothing to do with part of homeland security, which is ICE. Thank you.
Yes, yes, and mayor, members of the council, you asked grant funding for this particular fiscal is going to be specific to hazardous materials and urban search and rescue training solely. All right?
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, chief. All right, I'll entertain a motion for Item 3N.
I'll move Item 3N.
And I will second it.
All right, moved by Winterer, seconded by Hare. May we have a vote, please?
Mayor Protem O'Day?
Yes.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hare?
Yes.
Councilmember Winterer?
Yes.
Councilmember Himmorich?
Yes.
Councilmember Moreno?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes, thank you. That passes unanimously, 6 to 0. Item 3I, please.
Item 3I, approval of statement of official action upholding Appeal 18 ENT-140 and denying the designation of sycamore trees at 1122 California Avenue as a city landmark.
So I have a question probably for the city attorney. So when we were at the meeting, there were discussions of when this was declined as a landmark. There were promises made, as one of the speakers said, and my understanding is no agreement has been reached with respect to preserving the tree?
That is correct. Following the landmarks hearing, the city attorney's office reached out to council who had been representing the family. We were informed that that council no longer represented the family. As a result, we took it upon ourselves to draft a deed restriction that has been presented to the family. The deed restriction has not yet been signed. The family has met with the city attorney's office on either two or three occasions in person to date.
And have there been any discussions apart from the signing of the deed restriction? Have there been discussions of whether the tree is actually being maintained?
So the family has represented that the tree is safe and being maintained.
And what are our alternatives when I think other, so I assume we cannot approve the STOWA. Do we have any other alternatives here other than that?
Our recommendation, our strong recommendation would be not to disapprove the STOWA on this ground. Unfortunately, I do not have other options to present to you legally. We are continuing conversations with the family, and we will continue to do so. There is another meeting set for Thursday, but it is, it is a difficult situation. We would not recommend that you reject the STOWA at this stage on this ground.
Can we continue this?
While you could, it's simply a record of the decisions that you have already made, and as a result, I would not recommend that either at this juncture.
Thank you. Well, I guess I voted against it the first time, and I'll vote against it again, so that's where we are.
All right, Councilmember Winterer.
Well, just to follow up on Councilmember Himmorich, if we did not approve the STOWA, that would not open up the door, as members of the public suggested, to rehear the matter.
That's correct. Unfortunately, if you continued the STOWA, we would have the same conversation. I would be strongly recommending that you adopt the STOWA at the next meeting unchanged. We would not recommend that you open the STOWA on this ground. The landmarks criteria, as you know, and the landmarks ordinance do guide your discretion, and it is critical and the obligation to follow that ordinance and the criteria in making landmark decisions.
And as my understanding matters such as that, once they're voted on, they cannot be brought back again unless by someone who voted in the affirmative, or am I thinking about something else?
You're correct. You have a, you have a procedure for reconsideration, but at this time, the public hearing has been closed, and the decision has been made by the council and been voted on, and the STOWA is simply a record of that action taken previously by the city council.
So somebody who wanted to rehear it would have to have voted the affirmative and then agendize that through a 13 item of some sort? Obviously, it's not before us tonight.
Yes, and then the public hearing would need to be reopened and reconsidered in full.
All right. I wasn't here, so I didn't vote either way, so I'm, sort of, my hands are tied. Thank you.
Mayor Protem O'Day?
So just stating it another way, the action that we took that night is the, is the action that's in effect, and tonight, it's almost like providing the minutes of our meeting for the STOWA.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? Oh, sorry, I'm not... Sure, Councilmember Himmorich.
So, so with respect to voting in the affirmative and bringing it back, I assume that voting yes on this after voting no on the matter would not give you the right to bring it back.
Not this evening, though. As Councilmember Winter mentioned, it would generally be brought back as a 13 item at a later meeting.
But what I'm saying is that, that I, as someone who voted no the first time, cannot bring it back as a 13 item later.
Yeah, your rules of order do, do require that reconsideration be brought by somebody who voted in the, well, who, on the winning side at the actual vote and not in the...
Yes, yes.
Thank you. That's, that's all I want to understand.
All right, so I need a motion for Item 3I?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All right, moved by O'Day, seconded by Hare. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Moreno?
Yes.
Councilmember Himmorich?
No.
Councilmember Winterer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hare?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Day?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes, that passes 5 to 1. All right, and then Councilmember Himmorich pulled Item 3O.
Yes, I pulled Item 3O.
I'm sorry.
The annual review of development...
Wait a minute, she has to read the item so people know what we're talking about.
Item 3O, annual review of development agreement compliance.
All right, now Councilmember Himmorich.
As I have every year, I think probably since I've been on the council, I've pulled this, or at least as long as you've been doing these reports. So I, I probably don't need a staff report, although I'm happy to hear one, but there are a couple of concerns that I have, particularly with respect to the tracking of the affordable housing covenants, which in, in some aspects of the DA report, the affordable housing requirements of various projects, as far as I can tell, aren't even listed, and that could be wrong. But I'm also concerned about the St. John's DA and, and in particularly, the community benefits aspect of it and how that's tallied up. And I'm also concerned, and frankly, I didn't even notice this, but my first question would be, was that based on a 2018 report?
Good evening, councilmembers. Roxanne Tanamori, Principal Planner. As indicated in the staff report, staff is recommending that council make a determination of good faith compliance for those outlined in the report, where staff is making that recommendation. With respect to your questions, I'm happy to tackle them. We could start with, with St. John's. I will back up and say globally, we do, PCD does partner with our colleagues in other departments and other divisions to help monitor the requirements as, as needed. Housing is certainly an area that we do seek support on in the monitoring annually as part of the preparation for what we bring forward to council. With respect to St. John's and the community benefit report, one of the overarching themes with monitoring, I will say, and this does apply particularly to St. John's, is that each reporting period is different for each agreement, and that's specified by the agreement. Sometimes it's based on typically when the agreements go into effect. However, with respect to St. John's, the Providence is required to report annually every July, so every calendar in July, every month, each year in July, they report on the prior calendar year. So that means in July of 2018, they provided a compliance report for the calendar year of 2017. This is what's in front of you. This is one of the agreements that's a little bit off cycle like that because of the way the DA was structured with respect to monitoring. So we just got in this month of July 2019, we've gotten in the compliance report for, for calendar year 2018. We will be reporting out on that compliance first quarter of 2020. So we're always about in practice, you know, over a year behind on St. John's, but that has been, there's never been a jump or a skip in what we report out.
Thank you, and, and if we wanted to, we could come to you and you could show us that report, for instance.
Absolutely, yes.
The, the one that just came out?
Yes, we do have that on file.
And that would be available to anybody?
That is correct, yes. And occasionally, folks do ask for it, and we have certainly provided that. It's, it's part of the record.
So the most recent report is available, just not included in this, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I want to ask you a couple other things about St. John's, and I had asked about this earlier, and so, and I'm particularly concerned about the cost of charitable and mental health services to patients, which is the biggest number in this report. It's $10 million and, or over $10 million. And I note that in the rest of the report, they say that it doesn't include Medicare reimbursements. But I see under this that the biggest item for cost of charitable medical and mental health services is Medi-Cal. So can you tell me what the difference is between reimbursements for Medi-Cal and reimbursements for Medicare?
I will, I want to occasionally, when we do report out, we provide this, this background on the community benefit framework for St. John's. It's, it's one that's fairly complex, so I want to just give a little bit of context for folks who are new on the council. And with respect to the community benefit report, this is a report that's filed by Providence as a, as a nonprofit healthcare provider. This is a report that's required. It's filed with the state of California. That's the basis of the information that's turned in to us annually. So they are following federal and state guidelines and requirements with that filing they provide to the state. Part of the community benefit plan reporting that is provided to both the state and the city includes what the DA requires in particular. This is from the 1998 DA. It was established, a community benefit plan was established then with the first approval of the DA. And the purpose for including lots of specifications about what gets included in the plan and reported out is, was at the time, it was this idea that if, if St. John's was sold to a for-profit entity, that the requirement to provide community benefits akin to a nonprofit would still be maintained here in the community. So that was at least the policy and the thinking behind, in part, why that was established the way it was in the DA. But this community benefit report includes the development agreement requirement of the Santa Monica, what we call the CAP, the Community Access Plan. That is a subset of their overall program. And so when you look in your staff report on page 13, this is Table 9.1, which is an excerpt of their larger report, which I have on file, those particular numbers, I want to be clear that what's represented on this chart are costs associated with unreimbursed activities. So what shows here is unreimbursed. So even in looking at, taking out that Medi-Cal number, which is part of the framework with the way they report to the state, we're still looking at, at just over $5 million of in-kind and cash support to entities as specified by the DA, which affect the Santa Monica, the local, the local area. And so that's the way this is broken out. I know that there was a question about the acronym. Perhaps other folks would ask, what is the CFDC? That's the Child and Family Development Center. They just tend to use that acronym. But that is what's contained in that, in that reporting. So when we look at what is required by the Community Access Plan, which is specified in the DA, they're looking at an annual obligation of $970,000, and that's the minimum requirement specified. Looking at this conservatively, taking out the Medi-Cal, you're looking at just over $5 million provided.
Well, but the CFDC, as I understand it, and maybe, look, I'm not looking at the DA, but it looks as if they're required to have that anyway. Am I wrong? Where it says that one of the agreements is that they actually run the, that child center, is that right? Apart from this?
Child care is a requirement. I guess I would go back just to couch that. That is correct. There are certain things that are required and actually captured in the community benefit plan. But again, going back to one of the, one of the requirements and why this was codified in the DA with community benefits was such that, that in case the, the health center was sold, that these requirements would still be in place for, for the new, the new sponsor for the hospital.
Again, it's hard for me to know, just looking at your chart, but I am concerned about what backs up these numbers and whether some of these enumerated items are not already part of their obligations under the DA as originally signed. And I, I feel as if it's not, because it's hard for me to assess it, it's, it's hard for me to know that they're in compliance based on this.
I will tell you that staff, and I appreciate that feedback, and perhaps we can think about how to break down this information further to hit, to make that more clear in future reporting cycles. Planning staff, as well as our human services staff, do review this material annually and do keep a close, close review, particularly on what's happening with the local partner agencies and the grants that they give and the work that they're doing out in the community. So that is something we are, we are mindful of and watching.
And, you know, when I see that they still are not in compliance, look, I mean, this report is so dominated by TMDs and, you know, AVRs, et cetera.
Actually, Providence-St. John's were pleased to say that this, this year, in contrast to previous years, they have met their AVR requirements, and so we're, we're happy with that progress.
Good, and, and were they amended in order, so I recall that there was debate about it. Have, have we changed their AVR requirements?
No, we have not. It's still as specified from the First Amendment to the DA that we did several years ago. But what has changed is that each year, we ask them to do a little bit more when their goal hasn't been reached. And so in this particular reporting cycle, using even, and looking at the data that they're producing now, that we know that they, they've met their target, and we're, we're happy with that progress. That represents a large, you know, a mode shift, meaning people out of single occupancy vehicles and into alternative modes. So that's what the, the compliance, that's how we track it.
And now let me talk about affordable housing for a minute, because in a lot of these mixed-use and housing-only DAs, there were affordability requirements, whether inclusionary or, and I don't quite know how to characterize the building across the street, right, that's parked condos with some affordable, et cetera. But there are affordable requirements, and I understand that they're monitored by housing and economic development, is that right?
Affordable requirements are, yes.
And, and are those, do we look at the agreements, the leases on those affordable units and on the underlying documentation to ensure that those units are in fact affordable and in fact comply with the other requirements of affordability and the affordability covenant?
I do know that housing conducts their annual audit, and they look at a variety of factors, and I apologize, I can't speak to every aspect of their annual audit review, but it is done, and we do check in with our colleagues on that.
But do you look at it before you fill out this report?
We rely on, on their expertise on this, in addition to reporting out generally on the DA, all sorts of terms that are required.
So as it sits today, the only non-compliant, but you're saying they're in good faith compliance entity is Colorado Center, is that right?
That's correct. Colorado Center's AVR is a goal and not a requirement, and they are in communication with us. We understand some of the factors that have affected those numbers. We do require them to, to continue to, to enhance and create, enhance their, their TDM program as a whole site-wide, and that's something we're particularly focused on, and they are well aware of our interest in, in their achievement of the goal.
And in the original DA, was it written that it was a goal and not a requirement?
That's correct, yes.
And in, are we still doing that in DAs, or are we taking out the language of goal?
We are structuring the AVR differently than we, than we did back in 2010, 2011, in that timeframe, where goals were more of the norm.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions of staff? All right, then I'll entertain a motion on Item 3O.
Motion to approve.
All right, moved by Moreno, seconded by O'Day. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Moreno?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamelrich?
No.
Councilmember Winter?
Yes.
Councilmember Har?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Day?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes, that matter passes five to one. And I believe that completes the consent calendar. That moves us on to item 6A, please.
Item 6A, appeal 19ENT-0260, an appeal of the disapproval of historic District 18, I'm sorry, 18ENT-0166, an application for a proposed historic district on Fourth Street consisting of certain properties located within the 2500 block of Fourth Street, including 2506, 25 through, I'm sorry, 2506 through 2516, 2518, 2524, 2525, and 2528 Fourth Street, and 317 through 321 Ocean Park Boulevard. And we have 12 members of the public who wish to speak.
And before we begin the staff, I just want to check with the city attorney. This one's a little odd, because it's an appeal, but we don't really, do we have an appellant? Or a, I mean, I know we have an appellant. But I just want to make sure I follow the right rules here. Got to get the procedure straight. So does he, I guess my question is, we have an appellant, but we don't really have anyone on the opposing side. Did the appellant still get the 10 minutes? Oh, you are on the opposing side. All right. Well, I don't, okay. I don't have anything that says you're here. I apologize. I'm the last to know. I'm just the mayor. All right. Well, then I think we'll follow the normal appellate rules where each side will get 10 minutes. Is that correct?
We could do ex parte communications while we're figuring it out.
Right, while we're, while we're figuring that out. Does anyone have any ex parte communications? Councilmember Winter?
I met Friday afternoon at 3:00 PM with, with Ann Lair and Carol Lemline from the Santa Monica Conservancy, who gave me a walking tour of the subject properties, which are under appeal right now. And I also ought to note for the record that while I have in the past been a member of the Santa Monica Conservancy, I am no longer as of last year. And during the period which I was a member of the Conservancy, I had no active role in any of their advocacy or decision-making processes. I basically was a member because I enjoyed touring the historic properties and going to their annual holiday party.
That should get them lots of members. Does anyone else have any disclosures? Councilmember Marina? I think you need to turn your mic on. That's all right.
I spoke with the Conservancy on 7/19 about the subject property.
All right. Not seeing anyone else. On Saturday at 11:00 AM, I met with Ms. Lemline and Ms. Lair at the corner of Ocean Park and Fourth, and got a tour of the various properties, including one of the property owners invited us in to show the interior. While that wasn't relevant, it was a lovely opportunity to get an ocean view from a lovely property. But yes, so I met with them at the site as well. All right. And now having done all our ex parte disclosures, seeing no one else in the queue, before, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure we back to 10 and 10. I only ask because I have cards for two minutes here, and I have requests for the appellant.
So it is a little bit of an unusual situation. The Conservancy is the applicant and the appellant here, which is what your council rules provide time for. The individual who identified himself is a property owner. Your rules don't, don't necessarily recommend, don't provide a special time limit for him, but we would recommend that you provide him extended time beyond a member of the public, because that side otherwise does not have extended time beyond two minutes.
All right. And, and the gentleman who was here, who was the property owner, can I have your name, please? I know which card I'm looking at.
Joseph Solomon.
Okay.
I move we hear the property owner for five minutes.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we are going to begin with Ms., Ms. Lemline. Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to begin with the staff report. I'm, sorry. It's one of those nights. Yeah, it got lost. If you don't give me a card, you don't get to talk. So we'll have the staff report now.
Thank you, counsel. Good evening. Steve Misalcomi from City Planning. So the next item on the agenda is an appeal of the technical denial of the proposed historic district on Fourth Street filed by the Santa Monica Conservancy, who is both the applicant as well as the appellant. Here is a brief overview of the city's historic preservation program. The Landmarks Ordinance was adopted in 1976. The purpose of the program is to protect improvements representing the city's cultural, social, economic, political, and architectural history, and also to educate and promote historic preservation. The program promotes the use of landmarks and structures of merit and historic districts to preserve the city's history. Currently, there are 132 designated city landmarks, 13 designated structures of merit, and four historic districts within the city. And historic district designation is one of the options available in the preservation program, where the city can protect and enhance improvements that are found to be historically significant. This is a brief timeline of the events. The district application was filed in November 2018, and the application has been reviewed according to the procedures established by the Landmarks Ordinance, including a community meeting and a landmarks review of the proposed district on May 13th, as well as on May, June 10th, where the commission, in two failed votes of 3-3 each, was unable to conclude on a recommendation on the proposed district. Because the commission was unable to take action on the application, providing a recommendation within the required timeframes, the application was deemed disapproved. And on July 8th, the Santa Monica Conservancy filed an appeal of this disapproval. And so as shown here, the proposed district consists of certain properties within the 2500 block of Fourth Street. The architectural styles range from American Colonial, Spanish Colonial, and Mediterranean Revivals, as well as Craftsman, all very modest in their overall size and design. The properties here shown in red are listed on the current Historic Resource Inventory. The proposed district is comprised of five parcels, consisting of 14 buildings that are all considered potential contributors that are considerably intact. And this is dating from the area's period of significance, which is 1904 through 1936. Although the subject properties were constructed during a similar time period, and may individually convey the development history of the neighborhood, the proposed district as a whole does not clearly possess a definable area. Here are some photos for the context of the proposed district. On the upper left is the subject district highlighted in yellow, and there's some context of what it looks like standing on Fourth Street. This is the sixth building property, that is the courtyard property located at 2506 through 2516. These are condominium units, in range in architectural styles from Neoclassical. There's a few American Colonials, as well as two Craftsman. Here are photos of the remaining properties as you, from the corner of Fourth and Ocean Park Boulevard, anywhere from Mediterranean, Spanish Colonial, as well as a few Craftsman that face Ocean Park Boulevard. So many of the early single-family residences on the block were constructed between 1910 and 1915 during the Craftsman period. Development of the block continued into the early 1920s, resulting in several revival-style buildings, and through the 1930s, including Colonial, Spanish Colonial, and Tudor Revival styles. Redevelopment of the immediate area began in the 1950s, as well as the 1960s, resulting in two-story, multi-unit apartments changing the overall scale of the block. Road modernization projects, such as the regrading of Ocean Park Boulevard in the late 1960s, the construction of the Fourth Street overpass, as well as the widening of Fourth Street, have altered the original residential setting of the immediate area. And in decades, recent decades, infill development has intensified throughout Ocean Park, dividing neighborhoods into smaller clusters of these modest residences of the early 20th century. So the appellant has provided their statement summarized in four points, as summarized here. The appellant does not agree that the district as a cluster is insufficient in size to qualify as a historic district, and that the district's size is not a requirement of the landmark designation criteria. The appellant states a precedence for the formation of small historic districts in the city, and references both the Bay Street Craftsman Historic District of 2000, and more recently, the 11th Street Bungalow Historic District. The appellant states the reasons for why the subject properties uniquely represent the early development of Ocean Park was not given sufficient consideration, emphasizing the extension of Ocean Park Boulevard, resulting in the rapid growth of residential development between 1917 and 1925 in the specific area that is identified as the Corner District. And the appellant states that the streetscape changes in the 1960s had no impact on the architectural integrity of the individual structures in the district, nor on the cohesion of the district as a whole. In brief summary, the appellant is correct in that the Landmarks Ordinance does not contain a minimum number of properties to create a historic district. However, the size of the grouping of the properties helps us to inform, among other factors, whether the subject properties visually and physically convey its sense of time and historic development, and its overall significance as a whole. Because of its small size and lack of unifying characteristics, this grouping does not appear to uniquely or significantly convey the historic development pattern within the Ocean Park area. And although the subject buildings have maintained their architectural integrity on an individual basis, the grouping does not appear to possess historic integrity in its early residential setting, and that's due to this streetscape alterations. Moving on to the Landmarks Commission discussion. At the June 10th Landmarks Commission meeting, commissioners in support of the district commented that there is a sufficient concentration of properties that do represent their architectural styles during this period of significance, and that the properties have sufficient architectural integrity that continues to convey the early development history of the Ocean Park neighborhood. It was also noted that the district is highly visible from Fourth Street and the Ocean Park overpass, and a summary of the findings provided for this failed motion has been included in your packet for reference. Commissioners not in support of the district expressed concerns regarding the lack of a definable area, the lack of cohesion as a grouping due to its insufficient concentration of properties, and that their architectural styles do not appear as a unified grouping that would rise to the level of significance as an historic district under the city's criteria. So in evaluating the proposed district, staff and the consultant utilized the National Parks Service guidelines and best practices to help inform whether or not the district satisfies the ordinance's criteria. The degree to which these guidelines are used to evaluate a district is not mandated by the ordinance, and criteria findings can be made that differ from these guidelines. Staff and the consultant find that the proposed district does not appear to satisfy the criteria for designation. This is based on the following findings. Criterion one, because of its small size and lack of unifying characteristics, the proposed grouping as a whole does not appear to uniquely or significantly convey the historic development pattern within the Ocean Park area. Under criterion two and four, architecturally, the subject residences are typical examples of their architectural styles and are not valuable to a study. Under criterion three and five, no evidence was found to indicate that any form of owners or occupants of the subject properties were associated with any important historical events, and that the properties are not associated with any notable builders or designers. Under District Criterion B2 and B3, the grouping of properties do not appear as a definable area that is unified either aesthetically through its architectural style or scale. To contribute to each other cohesively as a district is, is a, the proposed district is a small sample of the neighborhood's modest residential development, and is not distinctly different from any other small groupings of residences from the early 20th century that do exist throughout the neighbor, Ocean Park neighborhood. So this evening, the council in its review of the appeal should consider the appellant's reasons for support of the district, both arguments for and against the district as discussed by the Landmarks Commission, and staff's findings concluding that the proposed district appears ineligible for designation. We also do have the Historic Preservation Consultant, HRG, is available for any questions, and staff is also available for any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any clarifying questions for staff before we begin the public hearing? Councilmember Marina?
Hi. Thanks for the report. Just a quick question. Is there a timeframe that is, is specific to a historical designation? So is it 100 years? Is it 50 years ago? At what point does it cross the threshold to being historic?
So the Landmarks Ordinance doesn't have any specific timeframes of how long the district has to be or how old it needs to be. That's including landmarks as well as districts.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further questions, we'll begin the public hearing. So we'll begin with the applicant-appellant, which is the Santa Monica Conservancy. And you will have 10 minutes as the applicant-appellant. Please let the clerk know if you want to reserve any time for rebuttal.
I did not see an opportunity for us to speak in the discussion of time allocations. And I would like to respectfully request, since we are both applicant and appellant, that we be given the normal 10 minutes and reserve five minutes for rebuttal.
Right, yeah. No, you're, well, you're given 10 minutes total.
I understand that. My request is, is would it be possible to give us an additional five minutes for rebuttal?
No. But thank you for asking.
Okay.
No, because otherwise, then everyone who comes after you is going to want an additional five minutes. So you guys have a total of 10 minutes. Those are our council rules. So just let the clerk know how much you want to reserve for rebuttal.
I'll reserve two minutes.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Carol Lemline, president, oh, let me have it up, president of the Santa Monica Conservancy, Mayor Davis, Mayor Protem O'Day, council members and staff. Fourth Street north of Ocean Park Boulevard has long been under consideration as a potential historic district, and was mentioned in each Historic Resource Inventory until the most recent, when many potential historic districts were judged insufficiently large to be considered as such. In late 2017, when the structure at 2518-2522 Fourth was designated as a structure of merit, the possibility of a district was raised by members of the commission and the public, but was not then pursued. When the Conservancy began hearing of Ellis Act notices in the historic properties south of the structure of merit, indicating a significant likelihood of demolition or inappropriate alterations, we began to study a potential district in earnest. What we found were 14 contiguous historic intact residential structures, nearly all of which were constructed in the years following the extension of what is now Ocean Park Boulevard, westward from Fourth Street to Main Street and the beach, and which had survived the street-state improvements, beginning with the redevelopment era in the late 1960s, really unscathed. We were frankly quite shocked by the consultant's negative report, as this group of 14 buildings clearly meets the definition of a historic district in the National Register and the Santa Monica Ordinance, a geographically definable area possessing a significant concentration, linkage, or continuity of sites, building structures, or objects, united by past events, or aesthetically by plan or physical development. None of the definitions of a historic district in the National Register or ordinance requires a minimum number of buildings. Without the ability to designate smaller groupings, we will not be able to capture some patterns of development in Ocean Park, which was in fact developed in small independent sections, and not developed in large swaths like the north side of Santa Monica and other places. We are really skeptical of the consultant's rejection of our application based on, quote, "best practices," a subjective term not- "best practices," a subjective term not found in the legal definitions that we look to in defining what's a district. Bound by city streets and a large apartment building, the proposed district with 100% contributors clearly reflects the early residential development of Ocean Park. While it is true that there are very small clusters of historic residential structures scattered elsewhere, it boggles the mind to think that staff and some members of the commission considered a grouping of 14 historically intact and contiguous residential structures, 11 of which were built in the eight years between 1917 to 1925 after a significant transportation improvement, to be indistinguishable from any other non-designated grouping of historic properties in Ocean Park. I'll now turn it over to Ruth Ann Lehrer.
Good evening. I'm going to focus on the buildings. So first, I can't emphasize enough how unusual it is to find a group of historic residences with a high level of architectural integrity, built within a short time period, where 100% of the buildings are contributors. The transportation infrastructure opened up access to development here, and the district is bracketed by two residences, the earliest being the 1904 Victorian Cottage, which was a neighborhood pioneer, and the last being the 1936 Spanish Colonial Revival Triplex, already a structure of merit, but it fits into the story that this district conveys. So looking at the buildings, this late Victorian cottage is at the district's north end, it's retained all its beautiful Victorian features, the ornate Corinthian columns, original Victorian door, original windows, a bay window, and in the gable, leaded glass window, and scrollwork. This building forms one arm of a courtyard grouping, and this group is a very unusual courtyard because it does not consist of identical units around an open central court, but instead a variety of styles built at different times. Here's a pair of classic Craftsman bungalows built in 1921, side by side across from the Victorian, and then further into the courtyard are a pair facing each other across the courtyard light slightly later, built in 1925 with colonial revival detailing. And then at the end of the courtyard is this amazing building, this is a one of a kind in Santa Monica. It combines a colonial revival doorway with Monterey Revival open porches and railing, and then just at the ends, a little bit of Tudor thrown in for good luck. So it's really a unique structure, and this whole complex is really quite amazing and beautiful and important. So the next group introduces another rare architectural style, usually called Mediterranean, but in fact, it's a distinct subset that derives from Mission Revival precedents. And in this district, there are three examples adjacent to each other. Interestingly, they are contemporaneous with the Craftsman homes, valuable to a study of a period. This style is rare in Santa Monica, there are scattered examples around, but nowhere is there a group of three like this. The features are stucco walls, rectangular massing with heavy piers, flat roofs with stepped parapets, terracotta tile roof, which also appear on shed roofs resting on ornamental brackets. The windows are Craftsman style and often have fine detailing. So here's another example on the east side of Fourth Street, unfortunately boarded up today, but you can see the features I described. And then moving further south at the corner of Fourth and Ocean Park Boulevard, the third stucco bungalow, and then this introduces the three sister Craftsman bungalows that, that moved down Ocean Park Boulevard. So these, these buildings are similar, small-scale Craftsman bungalows, all built about the same time, and we call them the bungalow sisters because they really are like a family. Each one is similar in scale but with a slight difference in architectural features, and interestingly, their cladding is a small summary of Craftsman-style bungalow cladding. One has long barn shingles, one has clapboard siding, and the other clapboard siding with alternating widths. The proposed district culminates with the Spanish Colonial Revival Triplex of 1936, and this is included, although it's a structure of merit, because this architectural style was the successor to the earlier stucco Mission Revival homes that are nearby. So we have a variety of architectural styles in this district, but so does the Third Street Historic District. You can't get more cohesive than having 100% contributors. These buildings are unified by geography, chronology, and history. Finally, I note that every structure in this group is listed on the HRI as potentially eligible for individual landmark designation. So we could have a sequence of individual designations, but does that make any sense? Look at the geography, the addresses are all contiguous, the chronology, most of them built between 1917 and 1925. The question would come up, well, why are these not a district? The alternative really doesn't make any sense. So in terms of the findings that are before you, we would recommend that the findings in your section F are what we would recommend, we hope that you will support the designation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't know if you have any questions about the communication from Nina Fresco or anything else you would like to ask about the district.
All right, we do have at least one question, but I just want to confirm, it looks like you have two minutes and 45 seconds remaining on your
Bravo.
Time, so well done. Councilmember Winter has a question, it looks like.
Ms. Claire, you mentioned the Third Street Historic District across Ocean Park Boulevard, and you noted that not all of the buildings in that district are of the exact same period or the exact same architectural style. They're also not contiguous, it's a large historic district compared to this proposed one, but they're also not contiguous in their variety of non-contributing structures within the district, correct?
Correct.
So what we have here, while maybe smaller than Third Street, is staff is pointing out they're all potential contributors to a historic district, and they're contiguous, and they're all largely intact.
Correct.
All right.
Yes, it's extremely concentrated historic district, unlike any other that we've seen in Santa Monica.
Yeah, because there's not a single building in there that would not, is not a potential contributor.
Correct, and that's very unusual.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it doesn't look like we have any other questions, thank you very much. And now Mr. Solomon. And sir, we've given you five minutes, but if you want to reserve any of that time for rebuttal at the end of public comment, you may do so.
Thank you, I'll reserve one minute.
All right, so you have four minutes now.
Thank you. Dear councilmembers, my name is Joseph Solomon, I represent the ownership that actually owns four of the five properties that are in question in the proposed Fourth Street District. First off, I'd like to say that we own 2518 Fourth Street, 2524 Fourth Street, 2525 Fourth Street, we own 2528 Fourth Street, we own the 317 through 321 Ocean Park properties. The only property that we do not own is the one on the corner, so we have a tremendous amount of love for historic properties as a, as an organization goes. I myself has been, have been a developer in downtown Los Angeles with historic properties for over 20 years. I've done several adaptive reuse projects ranging from the Pacific electric lofts, the Merkentile Lofts, the Broadway Lofts, and most recently the Mayfair Hotel. So my experience with historic properties is extensive and with great appreciation. These properties are, again, part of our portfolio, and at the same time, we are against their being designated as a part of the historic district. The rationale has to do with the means with which this is happening. We feel there's definitely a singling out process here, notwithstanding. This proposed district has been discussed in two landmark commissions meetings, the district has failed to receive enough votes both times because in both cases, the recommendations of the city staff and the staff's historical consultant were very clear in recommending against the proposed district. And the rationale there, the, the vote was against the, the district because of the, and I, I actually implore both of you to, all of you to, to read the report. The approval of the historic district goes against the landmark ordinance, it goes against the National Park Services guidelines, it goes against the Historic Resources Group historic report itself, which were, which actually assessed the landmark ordinance as well as the National Park Services guidelines, and the Landmark Commission's recommendation is not there. The, the properties also have been significantly improved over the years, not in a way that's with respect to the, the historic fabric of the buildings, they've been adulterated, not, and not intact. Part of the appeal for us as an organization was to acquire the properties, to actually bring back a lot of that original taste, tenor, and fabric of the historic buildings. The appellant also notes the, the cluster. One of the things, if you read the reports, again, I, I encourage you to read the Historic Resources Group report because it does properly lay out every element that goes into the, the requisites to becoming a, a district. A cluster is simply not enough, a cluster of buildings. In this case, the appellant's note that there is, I believe they alluded to 14 buildings, there are individual buildings, however they are, a cluster is not enough, and the reports and the National Park Service guidelines specifically state that a cluster does not make a historic district. Furthermore, historic events and occurrences, historic people living at the properties are one of the points of the guidelines, none of that exists here. The, the issue of the streetscape that was mentioned by the appellant, not having an impact, again, that is an element that the National Park Services requires you to look, look at as part of your guidelines. So taken in the totality, the properties should not be a part of a, a historic district.
Thank you, sir. It looks like you have a question from Councilmember Winter.
Yes.
So you stated the organization was interested in actually restoring these properties, is that correct? So wouldn't the historic district be an advantage to you because you'd be able to enter into a Mills Act contract, take advantage of the historic building code rather than the current building code, and get a significant tax break?
While the Mills Act does have certain benefits and advantages, we have actually other, in our portfolio, historic properties and in some of the other historic districts, the timing unfortunately in the city of Santa Monica that you, you all have laid out for the historic districts to get work done is incredibly lengthy, incredibly bureaucratic, and takes a lot of money.
But you're still proposing to spend that money regardless to renovate the buildings back to their historic standards?
We're going to spend money to renovate, yes.
All right, well, thank you.
All right. Seeing no further questions from council, we'll move on to the regular public hearing then. I will call out names.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Call out names, please line up on the wall to your left so we can move smoothly from one speaker to the next. Nancy Coleman, Claire Thomas, Mike Salazar, and Jeffrey Sturgis. We'll start with those.
Hi, I'm Nancy Coleman, and I'm representing Noma. Noma has, board has voted to support the historic district. We think it's important to look at different areas of the city, not simply one or two areas, but diverse areas of the city for historic districts. It was encouraged as a way of maintaining low density in areas of the city that would otherwise be potentially built at a much higher density. So we support the appellant.
Thank you. Ms. Thomas?
Good evening, everybody. I live on 25th Street, and I'm the vice president of the Friends of Sunset Parks Board, and I'm going to just read you a letter that we had written in support of this. The proposed historic district includes 14 historical residential buildings, which show us what the neighborhood looked like in the early 20th century. The Santa Monica Conservancy nominated these homes to become the Fourth Street Corner District. All the homes showcase historic architectural styles that are not only intact but are not interrupted with more modern structures, thereby making a cohesive historic district. Although the smaller, although smaller than the nearby Third Street Historic District, the proposed district is larger and has more historic homes than the recently designated 11th Street Historic District. The Landmarks Commission vote on the application ended in a 3-3 tie vote. The Santa Monica Conservancy has therefore filed this appeal in hopes that the city council will agree that this historic section of old city, of old Ocean Park should be protected and preserved. And I just want to say on a personal note, when I moved here in the early 2000s, I'd had a big old yellow lab, and we would wander the city to try and get to know it, and I came upon this neighborhood as I made my way to or from the beach a couple of times, and was just really kind of enchanted by the, the vibe of that whole neighborhood, and it seems to be a cohesive area, notwithstanding my ignorance about historic properties. All right, thanks.
All right, Mr. Salazar.
Thank you. Mike Salazar, I live on Third Street, just around the corner from this hopefully next district. The two Mission-style corner buildings stand as a beacon. We haven't, we have friends and neighbors that often ask us, so what's up with those two buildings? Clearly, they mean something. Anybody standing up on the Fourth Street Bridge, looking at the sunset, inevitably somebody will ask, so what's the story about this corner? The fact is, before 1917, Fourth Street was the hilltop street that ended the eastward portion of Santa Monica. The creation of this corner is unique, contrary to some commissioners' misconceptions, and this did usher in the eclectic development patterns that we see today in Ocean Park. We can't have this happen over and over again, where our staff and our consultants insist on this national integrity standard that clearly we don't have that, we left integrity out of our ordinance for a reason, because, you know, we're not this collection, we're, we're eclectic Ocean Park. We saw this in the 11th Street District, and you saw past this. So when 14 of these structures rise to individual status, clearly, you should make the same call tonight that you did for 11th Street. Our Ocean Park neighborhood exists because of the beach, and farms, and boosterisms, and transportation feats, and hard-working families and pioneers, none of which looked or acted alike. Yet if our early pioneers could stand together like this Fourth Street District, it would be a priceless opportunity to capture. Let's designate this unique collection a historic district before it's lost or altered. And also, please, fast-track the new preservation staff position. I think we're in need of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salazar. Mr. Sturgis, before you begin, I'm going to call a few more names to line up behind you, so one second, please. Dolores Sloan, Richard Orton, Rich Caparella, and Phyllis Dudick.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Jeffrey Sturgis, it's great to be here tonight as a Red Sox fan, I'm going to make, I'm going to make an exception for Yankees under four feet tall. I have actually been living in one of the structures that has become a structure of merit for the last 21 years, and I will be moving, moving on, and I'm actually kind of looking forward to it because my kitchen was built in 1936, and I hear they've made progress in kitchens since then. I want to speak in favor of this being named a district. There's been so much distinguished scholarship ahead of me that I won't focus on that. I do think of the significance of the district reaching across the street to the one building on the, the other side is very significant because those two buildings form gateposts that are on an extremely intimate scale and that have an outsized effect on the perception of the Ocean Park neighborhood by everybody who passes down Fourth Street every day, and that's a lot of people. Also, I think the three arguably painted ladies, Santa Monica-style, of the cabins going down the street also have an outsized effect because they're so visible from so many angles, and they're photographed by people all over the world from that incursion. Finally, I, I would argue that the incursion of the 1960s overpass actually improved the quality of the district by giving it a little challenge, and it has stuck there like a barnacle through the ages and has, I believe, a tremendous amount of cohesion stylistic and otherwise as a result of that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Dolores Sloan.
Good evening. I'm not here for the Landmarks Commission, although I'm a commissioner. I am here as Dolores Sloan, who in 1978 was very fortunate enough to buy a funky little building building. I won't give it a title because it really was funky, and I can't classify it as any style, but it was one of those buildings started in 1903 and intended for people to use when they go to the beach. And in the back, there was a, and I've since learned, the Craftsman that was built in 1927. So I was three blocks from what is now proposed as a district. And so I and my three children frequently walked and drove on Fourth Street, and we lived only three blocks from there, and we were continuously passing the area that's now proposed. So I'm very well acquainted with the frozen-in-time ambience of the three small bungalows that appear to be marching up the hill on Ocean Park. They actually have a personality if you're walking on the other side of Ocean Park. The Spanish colonial buildings on the top, which I learned tonight, are not, they're Mediterranean revival, but whatever, they're at the top. And then, if you turn the corner, you have bungalows and other styles, including Craftsman. Well, this uninterrupted landscape of 14 contiguous structures of rare architectural styles has kept its integrity over 115 years of geophysical and mobility-influenced impact. The Landmarks Commission minutes were on your, in your packet, and you can read our findings, and I will let that go because I believe that the appellants made a case that we support.
Thank you, Ms. Sloan. Mr. Orton.
I'm Richard Orton. I live in Ocean Park, and I'm kind of an Ocean Park historian, so I know a lot about the neighborhood. And this phase of houses is kind of really the second phase of Ocean Park. Ocean Park developed first along the beach and then kind of moved up the hill. And so this group of houses kind of represents Phase Two of Ocean Park. The buildings to the west are kind of Victorian, and the ones that represent this little group are more reflecting of the later Spanish influence, as well as Craftsman that we have. And just because these buildings aren't big and glorious, they're no less important. They're really wonderful little houses that represent the time in which they were built. And they are very close to buildings that used to stand on Ocean Park Boulevard. Before the overpass went in, there was a group of little stores on the south side of Ocean Park Boulevard. Nobody knows about it anymore, but that's where Merle Norman had her first salon, in that, right on Ocean Park Boulevard. And it's hard to imagine that there were ever commercial structures in that little stretch of road. The city, I've asked, has not been able to produce any pictures. If any of you are able to locate any pictures of that little enclave of stores, I would love to see them. And anyway, these houses are what remains. They survived the creation of the overpass, and I think they ought to continue to survive. It's maybe not a big district, but this is the kind of little enclave of buildings that give Ocean Park its name. This is why people move to Ocean Park. This is what makes it so special. So please preserve these buildings, make them historic. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rich Caparella?
Yes, thank you. My name is Rich Caparella. I'm a longtime resident of one of the courtyard at 2510. My wife has been there since the first Nixon term. I'm writing to urge you to designate the area as an historic district. As a person who lives there, we're very interested in preserving that neighborhood. The properties adjacent to us were not well represented at that Landmark Commission meeting, owing largely to the fact that many of the tenants had already been removed from their housing. Jeffrey, thank goodness, has held on as long as he has. We're going to miss him. Further, I am also concerned that the property adjacent to us will become an eyesore, as has been that case with the property on the southeast corner, the one that is now fenced over, boarded up, obviously an invitation to vandalism. And so I ask of you, what's the harm? What is the harm in allowing for an historic designation, thereby, among other things, shining a bright light on the plans of XYZ? Their representatives have claimed in the past they would like to keep the buildings intact, that they would, they have no plans to raise any of them. If that is in fact true, then we're really in trouble because that boarded-up property may be what we're looking at for a future, if this historic designation isn't given. And finally, Santa Monica, one of the reasons I adore this town is because it's such a dichotomy. It's such a forward-thinking city, energy and affordable housing, and mobility and social services, and the general quality of life. And somehow, at the same time, Santa Monica has this great respect for its storied past, a past that is obviously and inevitably, with each passing year, diminishing. These buildings are more than a portfolio. They are our town, and I would urge you to go with the appellate's decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dudick, and before you begin, first I need to confirm that Ms. Lehrer is here. She's donating you two minutes? All right, fine. And then, before you begin, I'm going to call a few more names. One moment, please. Mary Marlowe, Andrew Hoyer, Karen Molly. All right, you may begin, ma'am.
Yes, I'm Phyllis Dudick, San Vicente resident and active volunteer with the Conservancy. Honorable city council members and staff, I would like to share some excerpts from emails received from the public in support of this nomination, and add that there were over 60, well over 60, emails that came in, so of course, we're not going to go through all of them. First, from Helen Corrigan, quote, "The residents are a quintessential part of our neighborhood, enhancing walks to the beach and Main Street, as well as commutes along Fourth Street to and from downtown. If these residents are not preserved, it will be a sad day for our community." And another example in which Ocean Park becomes more soulless and less vibrant. From Charlotte Jepson, "I vote yes to creating a historic district. Love those original buildings." From Edna Spielman, "I support the application for the Fourth Street Corner. It would preserve an important part of Ocean Park history." From Chris Hook, "I totally support the Fourth Street Corner. Santa Monica, as it once was, is disappearing. I lived near there for 10 years and relished the old buildings every day. It is slipping away. Please save our history." Natasha Giovanni says, "It is important that the council vote in favor of establishing this new historic district. Retaining our community, character, and history is vital to staying relevant decades from now." And Mary Young says, "I reside in Ocean Park and very much support preserving all we can in this area." From Valerie Rose and Leonard Brownswick, "The city is rapidly changing. It would be a shame to lose one of the few remaining remnants of the past." From Amy Rowat, "This historic section of our beloved Ocean Park neighborhood deserves to be protected and preserved. The unique character of Santa Monica is shaped by historical buildings and houses such as these." And from Heather Brewer, "As our city changes in ways that are both inevitable and otherwise, I believe it becomes increasingly important to preserve our history. Architecture, like any art form, speaks in a way that almost nothing else can, getting at those ineffable bits that even our most mindful efforts at documentation just can't." And I would like to add my own support for this nomination, to preserve history in the Ocean Park area, important to our city as a whole. Thank you. And I do have a question. If I have any time left, can I yield it to the Conservancy?
No, you may not. You do have time left, but we don't let you do that. I'm sorry.
They do at Congress, so I thought I might try it here. Thank you.
It never hurts to ask. Thank you, Ms. Dudick. All right, Mary Marlowe?
Good evening. I'm Mary Marlowe. I'm a resident of Ocean Park, a former president of the Ocean Park Association, and have been very active in Ocean Park for about the 20 years I've lived here. I've been on the Lincoln Boulevard improvement and also the Ocean Park improvement, so I'm pretty familiar with it. One of the things that I think is important to understand about Ocean Park is how, what a small area of the city it is. It's pretty hard to have a big district when you're a small area. We only go from the beach to Lincoln and from the city border with Venice to Pico. We're probably one of the smallest area in the cities. For sure, we have the smallest lots. So I really take an argument with the idea that this is a small cluster and it's just not big enough. We're just not a big area. It's that simple. There are, most of the historic districts in Santa Monica are actually clusters. Bay Street's a cluster, 11th Street is a cluster, Third Street is a cluster, San Vicente is a cluster of big bungalows. So I'm really puzzled that staff seems to have a problem with the cluster, particularly in a small area. So I just want to bring that to attention. The other thing is, I think the logic is faulty here. There seems to be a real emphasis on the national standards versus Santa Monica's. We have our own standards because we're a unique community, and Ocean Park in particular is a unique community that really was its own city and has a little different growth than the rest of Santa Monica, which I think other people have brought up. So please support the appellant. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hoyer?
How many, how many years until they're going to fix that?
For you, never.
Yeah. Good evening. My name is Andrew Hoyer. I'm the Government Affairs Officer for Santa Monica Mid-City Neighbors. Last Tuesday night, our Board voted publicly to support the creation of this district. I often wonder, what are the motivating factors that drive city staff to ignore the mandates of the loose and continue to rely on the national standards when it was made very clear last year by our former city attorney that the city ordinance is what should be driving these designations? I feel the need to reiterate that only one of the nine criteria must be met to create a historic district. With the staff report for this project and their continued hiring of consultants who are dismissive of the idea of historic districts by Santa Monica standards, there is now the stench of something foul coming from city management that alludes to collusion between nefarious forces that want to maximize the tax rolls by out-of-control development. Thanks to the negligence of Shannon Douth, the Arts Commission recently lost the opportunity to acquire the Home Savings and Loan mural at 26th Street and Wilshire. This gem could have stayed in Santa Monica but is now in the process of being moved to Orange County, which is hours away. I am also curious as to why the company that owns most of these properties sent a representative to the very first community meeting for this district who expressed extreme enthusiasm for the creation of this district. Why are they against it now? I'd really like to hear that answer during their rebuttal. This gentleman just stated that the Mills Act process takes too long, but the city rules bump these applicants to the front of the line for approval, so there is some dissonance there as well. Something is rotten in Denmark. Again, I encourage you to approve the formation of this district as mandated by the loose and allowed by city codes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoyer. Ms. Molly?
I think it would be better if we got the rebuttal right now.
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
I won't speak right now because I think it's a good moment to get the rebuttal right now.
Oh, well, if you don't speak, then you won't be able to speak at all. Is that all right? All right. Councilmembers, we have one late chip.
Moved to here for one minute.
I thought you were going to, I thought you were going to say 30 minutes, in which case we'd be here all night. Any objections to hearing the late chip?
No.
All right. B. Nemliha for one minute.
Good evening, council, and thank you for permitting me to speak, and please support this district. When you do, consider three things. You've heard all the technical arguments, but consider these three things. This proposed district represents a significant part of Ocean Park's history. Ocean Park is a significant part of Santa Monica's history. Second, districts unlike individual landmark architectural gems represent neighborhoods and communities. They can serve a different purpose and should be valued for that purpose, which is their ability to transport us back in time and place. And third, considering standards. Santa Monica is not Boston, or Chicago, or even Cincinnati. Its buildings and neighborhoods should be judged by our communal standards, not theirs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nemliha. That concludes the public hearing. Well, that doesn't because we have rebuttal. Mr. Cole, you're in the queue. Did you want to be heard before rebuttal or after?
I'd prefer to be heard now.
All right, Mr. Cole, go ahead.
Mayor and members of the council and those who are here from the community, I very rarely address the folks who speak publicly. Those of us in public service have developed a thick skin, and there are some speakers who regularly accuse the city staff of various nefarious activities, and I think their credibility is shown by the redundancy and stridency of their claims. I just want to express, Mr. Hoyer, a disappointment. You are an active community leader who give a lot to this community, and I would just appeal to you and others not to drag the level of civility down by making reckless accusations and making a completely egregious attack on a single staff member, accusing her of negligence on something that isn't even before the council tonight. She's not here to defend herself, and she shouldn't have to defend herself. I am the one who's accountable to this city council. And if you want to attack me publicly or privately, or you want to talk to me publicly or privately, that's my job. But we have 2,300 people who work here, and they don't have the opportunity to speak up in their behalf. So it falls to me to do that. And many times, I bite my tongue. Many times, I endure attacks on myself, my staff, and the hard-working public servants. But coming from you, Mr. Hoyer, who I have a lot of respect for, I'm deeply disappointed. And I would ask you and other community leaders to raise the level of discourse and talk about the facts and not make reckless charges about the motives and ethics of city staff.
All right, we'll begin with the owner. Mr. Suliman, you have one minute for rebuttal.
I want to again thank you, council members, for hearing us out. Again, we like to, I like to reiterate on behalf of my ownership group that we are very much historic-friendly owners. We are not owners that are intending to, in fact, destroy the historic fabric of these buildings. To the contrary, we bought these properties because we appreciate the historic fabric of these buildings, and we want to actually improve their historic fabric beyond what prior owners have let them degrade to. We have buildings that have suffered from deferred maintenance, that don't, that don't stand up to the soft-story retrofit standards that we've, our city has passed. We are making those changes. We have people living in non-conforming units in these buildings, not to code. We've actually gone to building and safety and planning and actually submitted plans and permits to get them to conforming status. These are permits that have all been submitted since our last meetings, which are the reasons why I've actually presented, being against this historic designation at this time. We are trying to do right and want to do right and want to be conservators of these properties.
Thank you, sir. And then we have 2 minutes and 45 seconds from the Conservancy.
Could you cut me off at 1 minute and 30 seconds if I go over, because I want to leave room for Carol?
All right.
Okay, yeah. So I'm happy to hear that the owner is not looking at demolition, but rather renovation of the property, and I think it would be very helpful to ensure that the- of the property, and I think it would be very helpful to ensure that the special architectural features that distinguish these, these buildings on the exterior are protected and reviewed according to historic preservation standards, because renovation can lead to some detrimental changes to buildings, and certainly, there's obviously a lot of work that needs to be done. The, the historic preservation ordinance does have a duty to keep in good repair, and so I'm, I think if they were designated, we would not countenance a lot of boarded-up buildings. Regarding the standards for historic districts, I, we've sent, sent the definitions around to you because we believe, in fact, they're consistent with both National Park Service and Santa Monica standards. The many advantages to designation here, some outlined by Councilmember Winter regarding the Mills Act is a huge financial advantage, as the state historical building code as well, and also the, the help and support of city staff, because building permits are given priority processing if they, if they are for designated properties. Let me see, is there anything else I wanted to say? Oh, regarding the consultant's report, we disagree with the consultant's report, plain and simple, and I think they took an approach, the consultants who did the report on this district also-
You're at the 1:30 mark.
Okay, then I'll stop. Okay.
I wish I knew what Ruth Ann had, had planned to say, but let, let me, let me continue that we feel confident that if the owner is intent on bringing back the historic fabric of these buildings, that there should be no downside from designation. And there is an upside in terms, as Ruth Ann said, of having staff assistance and that of the commission in understanding the, and assisting in interpreting the standards and seeing that they're properly renovated. Especially, these properties are recently purchased, and therefore, one would hope the Mills Act would be of more benefit to them as recent owners. But I also want to comment on the, the question of delays, and we in the Conservancy do hear occasionally about delays, and by the way, we hear about them from people who are not doing historic buildings as well. We have a lot of things to process here in Santa Monica. It sometimes takes time. But I want to point out that, and I noticed this in preparing for our Landmarks Commission report in our newsletter, that within recent months, may I finish my sentence?
You can finish your sentence.
We've had three certificates of appropriateness, the most complex of which is the restoration of the exterior of the building called the Mendota Block, which is where Starbucks is on Main Street. And those three were all approved under the consent calendar without being pulled. And so, for straightforward restoration issues, there is support for a prompt resolution of any questions, and I hope you'll support us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lemli. That closes the public hearing. Do we have any follow-up questions? Councilmember Winter, or are you just gonna jump into discussion?
I was gonna jump into discussion.
So, can I interject then, because I do have one question for staff?
You're the mayor.
Try not, try not to pull rank. If we were, in fact, to designate this historic district, would that impose any maintenance requirements on the ownership? In other words, because they're historic, would they have to take care of the buildings?
Yes, so the, depending on the designation, if all the properties and buildings are, 14 are included as contributing properties, then yes, they, the landmarks ordinance would require that the property owners maintain those buildings.
Great, thank you. All right, seeing nobody else wanting to jump in with questions, Councilmember Winter.
So, when we look at these appeals, we are charged at looking at them de novo, which means, you know, we come into the process with no bias whatsoever, and so we have to look at the entire record that's before us, of, you know, the reports from the experts, the commission hearings, the statements by the appellants, we're here tonight from the property owner, and I have done all of that. And so, it seems to me relatively incontrovertible that these, all these buildings are potential contributors to historic district, and that they're contiguous and largely intact. Where there were dissenting votes on the Landmarks Commission, they identified two major concerns, one of which was that it was not a collection of unified architecture. I think that we're talking about historic district, not an architectural district, that we've seen other historic districts in this city, one right across Ocean Park Boulevard, where the buildings are all not necessarily of the same architecture, but they're of architecture of a particular period, of a particular history. This is not Nantucket. This is Santa Monica. The Ocean Park neighborhood has a history of developing a diversity of architectural styles at the same time. So, I'm not persuaded by the dissenting argument that there's not unified architecture here. And then the other issue is the matter of size. And I think that as the staff notes, there's nothing in the ordinance that says a historic district has to be of a particular size, so I don't find that that argument carries much merit. So, I will move that we uphold the appeal and designate the proposed 4th Street Historic District, and we do so based on the findings that are enumerated in Attachment F of our staff report.
Second.
All right. Moved by Winter to uphold the appeal and adopt the findings in Attachment F, and I'm gonna give that second to Morena, although there were more than one voice at the time, so I have to make a judgment call there. All right, Councilmember Hemmerich.
So, I will be supporting the motion. One of the neighborhoods I walked in 2014, the first time I ran, was this 4th Street neighborhood. I was struck always by its uniqueness, its charm, its originality. I myself live in a 1921 house, and I've tried to maintain as much of the original aspects of it as I can. I believe that it's important for us, just in respect to the history of Santa Monica and the history of this neighborhood, to designate this district.
Right, looks like the city attorney would like to weigh in.
Council adopts a historic, historic district by ordinance, which is not currently behind, before you, pending the results of the hearing. For that reason, I think I would recommend that the motion include continuing the hearing to adopt an ordinance consistent with council's vote, and council could then vote on that motion.
I will amend that motion accordingly.
So, just so, just so I'm clear now, the motion is to uphold the appeal, to do the findings consistent with Attachment F, and then to continue the hearing to consider an ordinance giving effect to that. Is that correct?
That's right, to bring back an ordinance for council consideration, giving effect to its decision.
All right.
That friendly to the secondor of the motion?
He's just, he's just lucky he got to be the secondor. All right, is there any further discussion of the matter? Seeing no one in the queue, I think we'll have a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Morena?
Yes.
Councilmember Hemmerich?
Yes.
Councilmember Winter?
Yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Mayor Protemo Day?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes, that passes unanimously, six to zero. No applaud, you can just do jazz hands. All right, as I mentioned before, item 6B is being continued at the request of the property owner, so that moves us on to item 7A.
Item 7A, ordinance setting fiscal year 2019-20 tax rate for 2012 library general obligation bonds. And we have no speakers for this item.
Yes, and, and good evening, and I'll be quick, believe me, so.
All right, as you're leaving, folks, can you please be quiet? We do still have matters on the agenda. You can go outside and, and speak behind closed doors. Good, good evening.
Good evening. The item before you is the setting of the 2000, an ordinance, adopting ordinance, is setting the 2019-20 tax rate for our library general obligation bonds at .002743 for $100 of assessed valuation. Each year, council sets this rate, that's added then to property tax bills, the property owners to generate the funds to pay debt service on the bonds. And I'll also point out, Councilmember McEwen usually loves to hear this, but the tax rate is about 20% lower than it was last year, and that concludes the report.
All right, that, thank you. I think Councilmember Winter is about to channel Councilmember McEwen.
I was in the queue, there's probably a reasonable chance Councilmember McEwen's watching this at an irregular hour in Ireland, but I did want to say what he says every year, so we are lowering taxes. Is that not correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Great, thank you.
All right, having no chits that the matter is before the council?
So, I will move the item.
All right, Councilmember Winter moves to lower taxes. Councilmember Hemmerich seconds that emotion. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Sorry, I missed the first and second on that.
Oh, Councilmember Winter moved and seconded by Councilmember Hemmerich to adopt the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Mayor Protemo Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Councilmember Winter?
Yes.
Councilmember Hemmerich?
Yes.
Councilmember Morena?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes, that passes unanimously, six to zero. Can someone please tweet that we just lowered your taxes?
Item, I'm sorry.
That, that takes us to item 9A.
9A, public hearing and approval of 2019 stormwater parcel reports and stormwater management user fees and clean beaches and ocean parcel taxes for fiscal year 2019-20. And we have no speaker show this item.
Okay. Hi, my name is Shan, good evening, Mayor, and council members. My name is Shannon Perry. I'm with the city's Office of Sustainability and the Environment. I'm here with our annual presentation of the stormwater parcel fee report. The city's water should management program reduces water pollution to the Santa Monica Bay, it increases our local water supply, and it helps make the city more resilient and drives us towards our efforts to achieve water self-sufficiency. Each year, the city produces two stormwater parcel fee reports, listing each property in the city and the amount, the stormwater fees to be paid by the property owner. The information must be submitted by August 10th to the Los Angeles County Tax Assessor's Office, and this is so that they can be included in the county parcel tax bill. Annually, these two fees generate approximately $4.4 million. The proposed fiscal year 2019-20 stormwater management user fee remains $36 per parcel building unit. This is unchanged from last year. The proposed 2019-20 clean beaches and ocean parcel tax is $107.85 per basic tax. This is an adjustment of 2.94%, which is about $3.08. And these funds are used to manage the city's storm drain systems, as well as build other stormwater management projects. I thought I would just show you a couple examples of the projects that have been funded with these. We have our Clean Beaches Initiative at the pier, Los Amigos Park, permeable alleys, and green streets. Again, these are meant to treat our stormwater and to improve our efforts to achieve water self-sufficiency, as well as build our resiliency. So, in conclusion, as each year, staff is recommending that the city council approve the proposed 2019 stormwater parcel reports pursuant to the California Health and Safety Code and the stormwater management user fees and clean beaches and ocean parcel tax for this fiscal year.
Thank you. The matter is before the council, we, Councilmember Winter.
I have a question for Ms. Perry.
All right.
You noted that the Measure V tax rate accounts for an inflation rate of 2.94%. That must be some index of construction costs, that's necessarily not the CPI, correct?
It is noted in the staff report as tracking to the CPI.
Really?
Let's see.
I didn't think we had that much inflation, but...
I can double-check it for you right now. A CPI annual rate adjustment is in Section 6, yeah, it lists that and that.
Okay, I keep reading about the Fed thinking inflation's not high enough, but that's another matter. All right, thank you.
That's right. Councilmember Morena.
Hi, thanks for the report. Just really quick, the, the 2.94 increase is the CPI adjusted rate, but you said that it's unchanged from last year, or a portion of it's unchanged. What's the difference in the two?
Yeah, let me clarify that for you. Okay, so there are two different stormwater parcel fees. One is the stormwater management user fee. That one is $36 per parcel building unit, and that one remains unchanged. And that one was established in 1995, and the compelling ordinance doesn't track to CPI.
Got it.
The second one comes from the clean beaches and ocean parcel tax. That was passed, I believe, in 2006, and it does allow us to adjust for CPI.
Got it, I understand. So, my questions are related to the actual costs it takes to maintain these facilities and do the projects, the ambitious projects that we want for sustainability's sake, and are we charging appropriately to accomplish everything that we're trying to set out?
I would say for this fiscal year, these stormwater parcel fees are adequate. They don't cover 100% of our anticipated project costs, but we also fund these projects through state and federal grants, through CIP projects, and through other mechanisms.
So, we're covered this year, but that's why you come back every year with some new amount based on what our goals are?
Exactly.
Perfect, thank you.
And as we approach water self-sufficiency, we'll be looking at that with even more scrutiny.
Got it, thanks.
Seeing no one else in the queue, do we have a motion?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Second.
All right, moved by Winter, this one's going to Councilmember Hara, moved by Winter, seconded by Hara. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Morena?
Yes.
Councilmember Hemmerich?
Yes.
Councilmember Winter?
Yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Mayor Protemo Day?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes, that passes unanimously, six to zero. And that leads us to matter 11A.
Adoption of a resolution amending preferential parking zone F to include the area generally bounded by Highland Avenue, Ocean Park Boulevard, 11th Street, Glen Avenue, and the south city limit.
All right, and before we hear the staff report, actually, Councilmember Winter has a statement, as do I.
So, I live in the proposed zone. I own a home in that potential preferential parking district, so it's a matter of prudence, I'm gonna recuse myself from this item.
And although I do not own a home in that area, I actually looked at a home in that area this morning as a potential purchase. And although I don't have an economic interest in it, I've not put an offer in out of an abundance of caution and to avoid any appearance of impropriety, I am also going to recuse myself. And so, that leaves the five of you. Mayor Protemo Day will run the meeting, at least for this item.
As the mayor and council member leave, we can start the staff report.
Hello, city council. My name is Scott Johnson with the Mobility Division. I'm here to talk to you all about amendment of, amendment of preferential parking zone To go over this briefly, I just wanted to cover basically how the zone comes about, or how you go about amending the zone. First, a block with petition. In this case, we had a block from Ashland between Lincoln and 11th Street petition, as well as a block of, the block of Pure Avenue between Lincoln and 7th Street petition to ask us to evaluate the area if it was suitable for preferential parking. The next step staff would take would be looking at the particular blocks at petition, as well as the neighborhood area, to, to see what type of the parking- as well as the neighborhood area, to see what type of the parking conditions are in that particular area. We then take that information to a community meeting, which we held at Olympic High School, where we get feedback, you know, from businesses, community members, and also property members in the area about what type of regulations would be suitable and the reaction to what the parking data was saying. Now we're at the step of city council now, where we're proposing a recommendation. This is kind of a unique zone because it is in the coastal zone. So the California Coastal Commission requires us to get a coastal development permit to implement new preferential parking or expand the boundaries of the existing preferential parking zone in this particular area. And that's that area west of Lincoln Boulevard. And what happens after a zone is adopted? Just to give example of the last zone that was approved, Zone 00 in the northeast neighborhood area, city council approved regulations for the entire area, two-hour parking, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. daily, except by permit. So you can kind of see, that's that zone on the right, and you see there's red and also blue blocks. And the way it works is the whole area is approved for a particular type of regulation, but when we receive a petition, that's when we actually install regulations on that particular block. So the red blocks, residents of those blocks submitted a petition requesting it. The blue blocks are eligible to get it, and we'd be able to install it as soon as they submitted a petition. And the whole idea is to have consistent regs approved for the whole area, but also allow residents to have local control on a block-by-block basis. This map here shows all the preferential parking regulations in the city. Right now, about 40% of the blocks in the city do have some type of preferential parking regulation. The specific area we're talking about here, where the request was, where we'd be amending Zone F to expand it, is on Lincoln Boulevard, south of Ocean Park Boulevard, east and west of Lincoln Boulevard there. And I'll zoom in to kind of give a closer look. But the blue blocks are the ones where they haven't submitted petitions. Red is where we have installed regulations. Okay, so this is a zoom-in picture of the particular area. You can see Olympic High School to kind of orient you there. You have Ocean Park Boulevard, the southern boundary with LA there. And it's primarily looking at the area east and west of Lincoln Boulevard. And what this is showing here is the existing regulations that currently exist. The red is where we have regulations installed. Blue is where the zone has been approved, and what residents have chosen not to submit a petition and get regulations for their street. They were implemented at various times. I highlight the type of regulations in the area. Hill and Raymond Avenue between 7th and Lincoln Boulevard. Shown there have two-hour regulations during the day, so you could park for two hours without a permit. Toward the southern boundary, on Navy and Ozone, there's stricter regulations. And then you can kind of see in the kind of northeast corner on Euclid and 11th Street, and also further down Ashland where it's blue and red. That's kind of the furthest extent of Zone L, which was created around Santa Monica Community College. And the idea was those regulations were designed around during school hours to prioritize residents. This map here shows what we're proposing for the area. Please note, we'd be expanding Zone F, so those Hill and Raymond, but we wouldn't change the regulations on those particular existing blocks unless residents submitted a petition requested it. As I said, it started with petitions from Ashland Avenue. They were very interested in daytime two-hour regulations and then also resident-only regulations during the nighttime for a daily period. And also, we received a petition from Pier Avenue. They wanted stricter regulations of resident-only parking. And really, the main thing we heard from them is they were concerned about the development of 2903 Lincoln Boulevard, which was granted entitlement as currently in the review process. That's going to be located on Ashland, I mean, excuse me, Lincoln Boulevard between Ashland and Wilson Place on the east side. It's a mixed-use development. It's about 47 units, and the commercial on the bottom there. There are some conditions attached to that property. It's required to have a construction mitigation plan, as well as transportation demand management requirements to reduce travel and trips at that particular location, such as subsidized transit passes for tenants of that particular property. And so, once we received those petitions, we did a parking study of the area. It seemed to have moderate to high usage, particularly during the day, and about equal amount of usage during the weekdays and weekend time periods. And it did not meet some of the higher thresholds we look at, where it's consistently high throughout the entire day. So we thought two-hour regulations might be more appropriate. And we brought that idea to the community meeting. We heard a lot of different voices there. Some people thought two-hour regulations, two-hour would be appropriate due to the nature of the businesses on Lincoln Boulevard and the residences. Some people thought much stricter regulations would be more appropriate in the evening or just all day. But we did hear a lot of voices also that thought regulations would not be appropriate for this area, that parking wasn't as big of a deal. You might have seen that in some of the comments that were attached to the staff report. And two unique things were pointed out by residents. They said a lot of the auto-related businesses use the street parking for car storage, where they just kind of leave it there all day, and that was concerning. And that was actually, looking back at the old staff reports, why it was originally, the existing regulations on Hill and Raymond were initially implemented. That was one of the reasons because of car storage on that. So this might be a way to address it for the rest of the area. Additionally, people mentioned a lot of people parking on the streets, getting like Uber or Lyft. They appear to be going to the airport and leaving their car for over 72 hours on those particular blocks, taking up space. So it's kind of two unique things that were noted in that area. And although, and another thing we heard in the meeting was kind of looking at the area comprehensively to make sure that, you know, if we implement on Pier Avenue, the other nearby blocks aren't left out. And while no boundaries are perfect, that's why we kind of chose Highland Avenue and up to Glen Avenue, Glen Court area as the two extents of the boundaries. Because the topography of the site's kind of unique. You have Lincoln Boulevard, which is the low point, and then as you go east or west, the kind of, the elevation raises. So we thought those boundaries would be sufficient that it would kind of dissuade people from continuing east or west, simply migrating the parking because of the steep elevation there. That'd be more of a hassle to kind of go from Lincoln to your car as you continue eastward. And the specific regulations we're recommending for the area are two-hour parking, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. daily. We think the daily would be reasonable because of the weekend and weekday and weekend where similar amount of parking. It would help address the car storage issue that disincentivized people from the car storage, depending on if they had to move their cars every two hours, and also would dissuade people from using it as kind of a place to park and then take a Lyft to the airport as well, address those two issues. Additionally, we are, staff are recommending allowing some two-hour parking because of the limited meter parking in the area. You have on Lincoln Boulevard, you have the bus-only lanes. So basically, the metered parking in Lincoln Boulevard on the west side is unavailable four to seven in the evening. And then on the east side is unavailable seven to nine in the morning to facilitate those bus-only lanes. So this area in particular has more limited commercial parking than other areas. And additionally, looking at the data, when we looked at the data on Hill and Raymond, it did seem having those two-hour regulations in place by allowing some limited time parking did help residents find parking. The parking usage was about 15% to 20% lower on those blocks compared to nearby blocks. As I mentioned earlier, there's a kind of a unique wrinkle to this, is that a portion of the zone is in the coastal zone. As you can see in here in green, that would be the area in the coastal zone. So if the staff recommendation is adopted, we would also have to get a coastal development permit for those blocks in that area. And we would immediately pursue doing that if city council decides to adopt this recommendation. And also, staff would recommend not implementing any new blocks in the area. Even though a portion of it is not in the coastal zone, we would recommend waiting until we get coastal approval, so both sides would have the opportunity to get regulations via petition if they wanted. To quickly sum up, this is the area roughly between Highland Avenue, Glen Court, Glen Avenue, and Ocean Park and the southern city boundary. We think the two-hour regulations would be appropriate to kind of address the parking needs of the residents while also balancing the needs of the other users in this particular area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our staff? No?
Yeah.
Yes? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Moreno?
Hi, thanks for the report. Just a couple of questions. Is there any programs for economic hardship? I know that, you know, I live in a permitted zone, and I think I was one of the first permitted zones. And luckily, you know, I can pay for it, but what if some folks can't? Do we have a supplemental program?
We currently do not have a supplemental program for the permits. It's currently $20 a year for the annual, as you're probably familiar, within $30. But I do think that would be something that we're pursuing in the future, definitely.
Yeah, I think altogether, I pay about $150 for two visitor permits and three car permits. So I think that's, ends up what it is. I know it might be less per permit, but if you look at the $150, that would be something I'd like to see. And then my other question is, rollover into subsequent blocks? So let's say that one block, let's say the one block on Pico, sorry, on Lincoln to 7th. If that block gets a permit by voter, you know, by consensus, but then the next block doesn't have permitted parking, do you see a shift in cars' parking the next block over?
There could be possibly some shift. I think that's one reason we are proposing the two-hour regulations, to hopefully that people are more efficiently using the parking. Like, oh, if I'm going to do a trip, I'm not going to park for three hours. I'm going to park for two hours in that area to reduce the possible displacement of that. But that is a possibility, and that's one reason we look to approve kind of a wider area, so the nearby blocks could, would be able to get those regulations if they found the conditions worsened to a degree that they could petition for that.
Got it. So I'm clear. So then, that entire zone you showed with the green map will have the two-hour parking, and then all of it will be pre-regulated so that residents on a particular block... I see David nodding. Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Himmelrich.
So the one thing I've never understood, when people submit a petition, do they request 24 hours, two hours? I mean, what does the petition ask for?
If it's a new block that has not been pre-approved, for example, like when the blues are created zone, we would, usually they would contact staff and we would ask them to say they are requesting, like on the line, like we are... They can say, I would prefer a certain thing, but we would ask them to put on it, you know, we are requesting to start the process to investigate this area.
So, and I didn't understand, I think, your question and answer with Councilmember Moreno. So it's my understanding that the only two blocks that are getting the two-hour parking are on Ashland and Pier, but the others have the potential of doing it if they petition for it. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the idea would be to approve the whole area for a consistent set of regulations by city council, and then as soon, therefore, as soon as staff could implement those regulations without having to go back to city council immediately.
So they're pre-approved for two hours, and if somebody comes in, if, let's say, Ashland comes in and says, we want the two hours too, it'll be pre-approved for two?
Yeah, correct, yes.
Okay. But right now, but it won't be posted for two until they come in and ask for it. Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. Did you understand what I was saying? Because you looked...
No, no, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Har?
So in our correspondence, we received a request that said for us to look at two developments, one on Ashland and one on Lincoln, that they would be excluded from it, even though we don't have any residents there yet. And I was wondering, I don't know how many residents that would be, but it seemed to me that if they were to extend a preferential parking for some of these units that are not built yet, and if they were to obtain these parking permits, then that would definitely defeat the purpose of them having the two-hour limit if they have the actual permit. So I want to make sure that we actually are looking at that, and here's the reason why, okay? On, I know I probably shouldn't say this, but on Virginia by Edison, we have a huge, 93 or 95 units, I think it is, across the street from Edison. And we have preferential parking. And when we have our children dropped off or picked up on Virginia from Edison, that street becomes an embodiment because there is no actual, the street is so small, so that it becomes an embodiment. So I want to make sure that that doesn't happen in these streets as well.
Okay, specifically for the 2903 Lincoln Boulevard project, I know in some projects in the entitlement process, they have chosen to exclude residents of that, and that was written into that. It's not, it was not at the time written into this specific project. And one thing to note is, the commercial portion, the employees would not be able to get permits for the particular street. And I know for that specific project, they're providing about two parking spaces for each residential unit in that property. But you can't really retroactively go back unless it was a new agreement agreed to on that particular property, on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Scott's right that that wasn't included in the Lincoln Boulevard project, that condition. We have included that in several other mixed-use projects, like the Bollin Alley project and this project up on Wilshire that went to planning commission. Those had conditions that said that residents of those buildings would not be eligible for preferential parking. We can't really do that on a global basis, so what we're looking at, are there other ways we could accomplish that? One way we've kind of discovered is that we could go back and amend the district boundaries to exclude those mixed-use buildings. That would be a way we could accomplish what you were talking about, because we think that is a reasonable goal. But we'd have to do it comprehensively, and so we're looking into the best way to do that on a citywide basis, how to exclude these mixed-use projects from the preferential parking districts. So trying to address it, but we're going to have to do it on a more global basis.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Himmelrich.
So I was going to ask a follow-up question because, so as we start requiring zero to little parking in buildings, then, you know, we have this conundrum. I've not been in favor of these preferential parking districts for a long time, but I continue to vote for them and not against them because basically, once a neighborhood starts to have it, and I looked at the list, it's up to like Double Z or something. I mean, we have so many of them that pretty soon, every district is going to be preferential, which sort of goes back to my original idea that every household should get one permit per household, right? And then they can park anywhere in the city, right? And that's it, and no more. But that being said, that's a pipe dream, and I know that, having tried to get that done. So what, so if those people can get permits, have you thought about the impact of that, the ripple effect of a building? But there are a lot of units in that. Are there 50 units, 60 units? 50?
I believe it was 47.
Okay, 47 units. That could represent another 100 cars. So what would the ripple effect of that be on these streets with their two-hour parking?
There could possibly be some impact. I would note that they are providing a significant amount of parking as part of this project, and also, they are doing the transportation demand management, things that they're required to do in terms of subsidizing tenants of the building, both commercial and residential, with, I believe it's... with, I believe it's 75% discount on that. And also, for employees, commercial employees, they can get a parking cash out, where they have to sign an agreement where they would not park on the streets nor at the business as well. So there's incentives attached to the thing to reduce that. And also, with these bigger mixed-use buildings, typically you have an elevator system where you're going into the garage and you're going up to the unit, so it would perhaps be less likely that they're going to use that street parking in that particular area.
Well, so, I'm sorry to interrupt, but is the parking in that building bundled or unbundled?
It's not unbundled, currently.
It's bundled. So they get a parking space with their apartment, or it is unbundled?
We are not requiring them to have unbundled parking for that site.
So they're going to have people pay for that parking, which undoubtedly will be cheaper than our, will be more expensive than our permits by a lot, correct?
I don't know the specific price what they're going to charge for the parking, or if they're going to include it in the price, but possibly, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And just to be clear, I would also ask, the commercial use also has parking built for it?
Yeah, correct, yeah. Based on our current rates, it's not similar to like the downtown where we have different parking rates.
So it's an average of two parking spaces per unit for the apartments, plus an appropriate amount per square foot for the commercial use?
Yeah, our standard for retail, yeah.
And we are employing substantial amounts of TDM measures to reduce the amount of traffic and parking and vehicles that come in to the property, so.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. We do have some requests to speak, council, so if we could have the public testimony. Let's have Larry Getz, and then we have three late requests to speak, council. Do we?
Oh, second.
Okay, any objections? We'll hear those late speakers for one minute. That will be Vincent Esparza, Susan Hinquon, Hinquonquon? Alan Sangin? How did I do that? Okay, I see Alan Sangin, sorry, and Gwyn Pugh. Okay, Mr. Getz?
Good evening, my name is Larry Getz. I'm at 6:30 Pier Avenue. I'm probably the second house on Pier and Highland right there. And I just got this notice about this permit process going on here, but I was, I've been pretty well educated by sitting here, talking, listening to this right here. But I think the biggest impact, and I think councilperson here mentioned about the impact of finances, you know, as a homeowner, it seems like we're getting more and more cost by owning a home in Santa Monica. And personally, I've been there 38 years, and I've always been able to park in front of my house. I don't have garages that would accommodate a car these days. My house is 1929, and they were very small, the garages. So I have three cars, I'm in a construction business, with two cars and a truck, you know, and the impact of this would be, I mean, as well as anybody else on that street. There's a lot of apartment units and residential places and condos, and I'm surprised that I'm the only one right here. I don't recognize any of my neighbors here yet, and even though I walked around the neighborhood to see if anybody else would back me up here, but like I say, I've just been educated on this parking permit thing, and I don't know how far this has gone in, of the council here, if they're voting on this, but I'm totally against the parking permit, so thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Vincent Esparza.
Good evening. Thank you for your report. I'm a resident of Ashland Avenue between 11th and Lincoln, and I beg you to put a stricter implementation on the parking there, that it's 24/7, not just a two-hour parking. I've been there for 24 years, and it's just gotten from worse to worse. It's just going to get worse with the new units that are coming up. And if possible, exclude the 2903 Lincoln project as well. And there's actually about 46, 47 units that are going up, and there's already 10 that have been built already on Ashland, so we're looking at 50-some units. So thank you for your time, and I beg you to make a stricter implementation. Thank you.
We have a question for you.
So is what you're asking for, that only residents be able to park on, that only permitted cars park on the street and that there be no parking for anyone else at all?
Yeah, I mean, it's really limited where we're at. It's really a narrow street, and my neighbor will give you, hopefully, a little more detail on the amount of parking space there is already, but it's, it's...
I just wanted to understand.
Somebody mentioned Virginia earlier, and it's probably worse.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Susan Allenson? Alan? Did I do it right that time?
Yep, Alan Sangin. Alan Sangin, the choir.
Very nice.
Leave out the choir.
You're welcome.
First, I'd like to thank City Council for your continuing service to our community and continuing to this hour. My name is Susan Alan Sangin, I'm a 21-year resident of Ashland Avenue, east of Lincoln. I rode here with a neighbor tonight because I didn't want to lose my spot, because I wasn't sure I'd be able to get it back. In fact, I'm pretty positive I wouldn't be able. This is a great segue into 24/7 parking. We are parking challenged in the evenings especially. We greatly appreciate the 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM proposed permit parking, but that doesn't help me at 10 o'clock at night when I'm parking a block and a half away with a briefcase in one hand and pepper gel in the other. It's pretty scary. I understand and like the two-hour parking flexibility, but when 2903 Lincoln comes in, I don't think that's going to help us. Two-hour parking means setting a timer. Oh, let's just cut to the chase.
Oh, I think we did, thank you.
Okay. Well, 24 hours of that parking exclude...
Thank you. Okay. Our former Planning Commission Chair, Gwyn Pugh.
Hi. So I live on Ashland Avenue, and as a shopista, there's a high cost of free parking. I've lived there for 20 years, and now the street is clogged almost every night. It's bad now, but with the new developments, it's going to get worse, especially if they are unbundled, and they're going to try and get cheap parking on the street. Overnight restrictions is what we're looking for, from 6:00 PM to 7:00 AM. During the day, it's no big deal, generally speaking. The Coastal Commission, we shouldn't be bundled with the other side of Lincoln, that's across the Euphrates, and that's a whole different scenario, and it's not part of our neighborhood. If anything, it's the other side of 11th. Outlanders there park for multiple nights at a time, use it as a free parking location. It's a three-year process that we've gone through, and we've, this is really important to us, and other areas have had this parking restrictions, and everything is devolving to our neighborhood at this time. Please pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that finishes our public testimony, council members. The item is before us. Councilmember Marina?
Can, can we see that other slide that had the two neighborhoods broken out? What's currently in place?
Oh, the existing regulations?
Yes, please.
So this is showing all the existing regulations, and red is where it's installed, and blue where a zone exists, but they have not submitted a petition yet.
Got it. And so is this petition for that area, Ashland, Pier, Marine, and also that last slide that had the blue grid, pretty much in the entire area from Euclid Prospect down to, which would be 5th or 6th?
Yes, yeah, so roughly, so if it was overlaid on this map, so we're proposing expanding basically to Glen Avenue, to Ocean Park Boulevard, to Highland Avenue, and you, all the, we aren't going to touch Navy or Ozone Street, those existing regulations.
Right, okay. Got it. And, and to comment on the last speaker, can we look at two different versions, the Lincoln East and the Lincoln West? Or does it, is there some efficiency to do it all at once?
The, to kind of go to this slide, the idea was, so basically, one side requires a coastal development permit, and since, you know, just implementing, we want to give the opportunity for both sides to, if they desire to have it, submit that petition and get regulations. So we were thinking, we were looking to go to the Coastal Commission in the fall/winter, and then implement after that. But technically, we could proceed immediately with the side to the east and have, implement regulations on that side.
Got it, I understand. Thank you.
Councilmember Himmelrich.
You aren't quite done, I have one more. So, so can you, it sounds as if there are two schools of thought here, maybe, in that on the east side of Lincoln, people are having problems with overnight parking, and on the west side, and now, I don't know exactly what your flexibility is, and once you say two hours, or you set the type of zone, whether that's all you can do, or whether you can do something different on the east and on the west?
Yeah, you could definitely do something different, east and west. We were looking to try to be more consistent, because in the past, we did a block-by-block where they had different regulations, so we were trying to be more consistent with the whole area, but you could definitely have a certain regulations on the east and different regulations on the west.
Because Lincoln's a big street, I mean, and has different characters on either side, I think, so if, did you see a need on the east side for overnight parking? Did you ever go at night, or were you mostly there during the day?
Yeah, I was there at night. We actually did an informational meeting at 8:15 Ashland, so we kind of saw some of the parking conditions at night. It looked primarily, there is some night parking on a couple of the blocks, it seemed primarily focused in the daytime. And one reason for that, a lot of the time, is everyone, the evening parking, a lot of that is resident parking, so they would have permits anyway, so they wouldn't necessarily by granting evening regulations, it might not actually free up that much spaces, as many spaces, because it's primarily residence parking on the street compared to the daytime, where you would assume perhaps more commercial parking.
Well, but if it were permit-only, let's say, whatever, 7:00 AM to, you know, 7:00 PM to 6:00 AM, I mean, I'm assuming it's people like me who come home from work and park, right? I mean, and so you're getting home at 6:00 or 7:00, right? Most of the people who are there during the day aren't there anymore, and so the issue is, can I get a parking space near my house at night so I can go home and go to sleep? I mean, that was my sense of what they were expressing, but tell me if I heard wrong.
No, no, I think it's a valid point. It's just, we're thinking, a lot of times, it's the residents returning, they all have permits, and they're all parking, usually the predominant parking during the evening is resident parking.
Right, but if it's permit, so the point is, if it's two hours till 10:00 PM or midnight or whatever, right, then you can have people, for whatever reason, parking there for a couple hours to go, you know, wherever they're going on, you know, or, but if you come, and maybe this is unnecessary, I mean, maybe the two-hour parking is not desirable for people who are looking for a 12-hour parking space, and so it would be mostly residents, so maybe it wouldn't hurt it at all, but I, you know, again, this is not my area of expertise, so I'm asking you to help me.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's unreasonable. I think it would perhaps free up a couple more spaces if you did evening regulations. I think it's something to consider. The one balancing act of that is if you do have guests or other people over in the evening, you would then definitely have to get them a permit, like a visitor permit, if people were visiting you in the evening hours.
Right, but most people I know who are living in these streets actually have visitor permits. I mean, you have a couple, right? I mean, yeah, so, right, and then you might have trouble parking, or you might not, depending upon whether your neighbor's having a party, right? So, hate these preferential parking things.
So can I, can I just clarify? Your point is that the congestion and parking in the evening is there as they are residents and would still be there with a permit?
Yeah, I mean, I think you could make, there is probably some commercial parking in the evening, but it'd primarily be residents with the permit, so you might end up with the same situation, but it's more restricted, so if you did have guests, it might be more inconvenient for you.
Okay. Councilmember Marina?
So, thank you. Would you mind throwing up that first slide, please? Yeah, okay, that one, cool, thank you. It seems from this slide that we're deficient on the east side of Lincoln, without a doubt. We have this Lincoln project that's going to come up and sort of exacerbate the issue. It sounds like there's some technical challenges behind that, and, you know, what David had suggested is, do you carve it out? You know, it's not in the development agreement, so how do you handle that? Another challenge seems economic hardship, when you look at, you know, three permits plus two visitor permits, that's a concern for me. And then, when you look at the west side of Lincoln, you're really talking about 7th Street from Ocean Park to the city's border, and then Ashland, Pier, and Marine, right? Because the other blocks are already effectively permitted, and maybe Highland, Raymond, I mean, you've got a few other streets, but it seems like the real need, from what we hear from the residents, is on the, is on the east side of Lincoln. And so I assume we can move it, but there are some challenges, I think, that PCD needs to work through to ensure that we get it right.
Okay.
Well, it sounds like we can make the motion, but there's still some, some work to be done. Is that fair? I want to make sure that we're efficient in, in processing this.
Well, maybe I can jump in at this point, I haven't spoken yet. So, as I look at this, I think, I appreciate the public testimony, it was mixed on both sides. You know, we hear about the project that's coming in, that's mixed use on Lincoln, it appears to me it has more than sufficient parking, probably too much parking for that building. And the study that we have from our staff says that it was minor to, minor to medium use, I think was the...
Yeah, correct, so it was hovering about 85 percentile on a lot of blocks, and it exceeded that for about a little bit more than two hours on a lot of the blocks in that particular area. And the reasoning we say 85 percentile, that's basically, if you have that on a block, that means you're going to have a couple spaces open, so if you're returning, you're not going to have to circle the block, so that's kind of why the rationale for that threshold.
Great. So it strikes me that it's not one of the areas that's in terribly high demand versus other parking districts that we've looked at. The economic costs are substantial. I vote against these just by principle. It's a very high threshold to get me to go for these. I think that generally, these parking permit districts are a privatization of public space that benefit homeowners over everybody else in our community. And so I'll be voting against recommending a district here. And so I think... I don't think, I don't think we need a motion unless somebody wants to offer a substitution.
Yeah, I mean, the motion that I would make would be to approve the east side of Lincoln, figure a way to exclude the mixed-use project, because they have sufficient parking onsite, and study the economic hardship concept.
Okay. Okay, then, we have a motion that would be to amend the district as proposed, and the amendment would include the east side of the district, exclude the west side, presumably that would obviate Coastal Commission approval. And what was...
And consider the economic hardship factor.
Right, and have an economic hardship.
So the district would be Wilson, Pier, Marine, and Hill. The bounds would be the boundaries?
Marine, yep.
And Hill.
Correct.
May I?
Ms. Stefan.
I wanted to just flag that we have a bit of a timing issue on the west side of Lincoln, and that is related to an item that you considered earlier tonight, which was the Coastal Plan. We are in a window right now where we can still be grand-parented in if we go for a CDP prior to the, to the LUP that you looked at tonight, being approved by the Coastal Commission. If we wait, we then are required, it's a higher hurdle, we're required to do a map amendment. So I just wanted to flag for you that on the west side, the inaction tonight would just increase the hurdle for that neighborhood, should they want to get preferential parking in the future.
Okay, that's a helpful flag, thank you. So we have a motion. Clerk, can we have a vote?
Councilmember Marina?
Yes.
Councilmember Himmelrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Winter, I'm sorry. Councilmember Har?
Yes.
Mayor Protim O'Day?
No.
Oh, you're me tonight.
So the, the motion fails?
Yep.
And I think, unless there's another motion, council takes no action on this, and we can close the public hearing.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you all. We can, oh, how very punctual of you, Mayor. Does, is Councilmember Winter also notified? Okay. Then clerk, if we can call the next item.
Item 13A, recommendation to accept David Hertz's resignation from the task force on the environment, and authorize the city clerk to publish the vacancy. And we have no speakers on this item.
Move to accept with great regret. I think we can just do it by acclamation.
Not by acclamation. We can do it by a voice vote. But we do need a second, actually.
Second.
All right, moved by Himmelrich, seconded by Har. We can do this by a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. That passes unanimously, emphasizing with regret.
Recommendation to accept Richard Guretz's resignation from the Housing Commission, and authorize the city clerk to publish the vacancy. And there's no speakers on this item.
Move we accept with great regret.
All right, moved by Himmelrich, seconded by Marina. We can do this by a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes unanimously, again with regret. 13D, please.
Recommendation to accept Sue, I'm sorry, Kynes resignation from the Housing Commission, and authorize the city clerk to publish the vacancy. And there's nobody to speak on this one.
Move to accept again with great regret.
All right, moved by Himmelrich, seconded by Marina. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, that passes...
Says unanimously with regret. 13D, please.
Recommendation to accept Jennifer Cohen's resignation from the Social Services Commission, and authorize the city clerk to publish the vacancy. And there's nobody to speak on this one.
Second. All right, I'm going to say moved by Marina, seconded by Har, just to mix things up a little bit. Voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Then that passes unanimously, again with great regret.
Request of Mayor Davis, Mayor Protem O'Day, and Councilmember Winter, that the council support a resolution by the California School Boards Association calling on the state legislature to raise school funding to the national average by 2020, and to the average funding of the top 10 states by 2025. California currently sits near the bottom nationally in nearly every significant measure of school funding and school staffing. While we are fortunate in Santa Monica to have a community that has stepped up to support our district, that approach is not viable for many other cities. To meet the needs of 6.2 million public school students, and prepare them for an increasingly competitive complex and technological world, the state legislature must secure full and fair funding for public schools. And we have one member of the public who wishes to speak on this item.
All right. All right, Denise Barton?
Good evening. I'm sorry, in looking at this, I just don't understand how you can expect an 8.3 square mile town to be responsible for all these other cities. How much is this going to cost, the taxpayers? And, you know, couldn't this money be used in a better way to help people in our own community, or the schools in our own community? Because you seem to be putting bombs out for schools on a regular basis. So that must mean that our schools need additional funding as well. So why don't you try starting at home before you go to other cities and help them? Because like I said, you should start at home first, because that's who you're representing, not the whole state. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Barton. I'll start off, since I'm the first name in the queue there. This is not an allocation of any money. This is simply supporting what is known as the movement for full and fair funding for public schools throughout California. As the item states here in Santa Monica, our electorate, as well as the city council, have recognized the importance of education, and have worked with our school district to provide significant funding at this current time. And I may be a little low on this, but I believe that through various agreements for facilities use, this city provides over $2,000 per student. Unfortunately, not every community in California can do that. And so this is just adding our names to a list of names of communities that are seeking, asking the state legislature to recognize the importance of education throughout the state of California, and to raise school funding, as it says, to the national average by 2020, and into the top 10 by 2025. Mayor Protem O'Day, you're next on the list. Did you want to add anything to that? How about you, Councilmember Winter?
No, what she said.
All right, moved by Marina, seconded by Himmelrich. We can do this via, oh, it says we need a roll call vote. So let's do it by a roll call vote. Let's jump in the gun there.
Mayor Protem O'Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Har?
Yes.
Councilmember Winter?
Yes.
Councilmember Himmelrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Marina?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. That passes unanimously, six to zero, and will notify our local school district of our support for the full and fair funding for public schools measure.
Item 13F, request of Councilmember Winter and Mayor Davis, that the Urban Forest Task Force be reconstituted for a period of seven years, with the same criteria for membership as set forth in the staff report and council action of April 10, 2012, and with the same purposes, but also to include acting as an advisory board to support development and implementation of a private tree ordinance. That the task force be expanded to comprise nine members, and that the city clerk be authorized to publish the vacancies. And we have one member of the public who wishes to speak on this item.
All right.
I'm guessing it's Jerry Rubin.
Yes, it is Jerry Rubin. Welcome, Mr. Rubin.
Thank you, Mayor Davis, Mayor Protem O'Day, council members, and city staff. I want to thank you for all your good work. I think this is a very forward-thinking proposal, and I urge full support for it. I want to thank the Urban Forest Task Force, and all the members, and their diligent work for the past 10 years. I want to thank the city staff that works with them, Matthew Wells, Wister Dorte, many, many of the others. And I think expanding it, especially at this point in time, when we're going to be evaluating the benefits of a tree protection ordinance, and how it'll work, and how it'll benefit everyone, and how it'll make things more predictable in many ways, and how it'll do a heck of a lot to help with our environment and climate change, and our important urban forests. I think this is a great, great proposal, and, and some new members can be on there. And hopefully, our dedicated chair that somehow didn't get reappointed, Grace Phillips, will be able to reapply and get back on. I understand there might have been some miscommunication in that whole dilemma, but I think it's important to increase the Urban Forest Task Force. And a number of people had thought that that would benefit even before the, the miscommunication. I don't even think increasing it should have anything to do with the miscommunication of not reinstating Grace Phillips, but only because of the importance of the tree protection ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. All right. Although I think the matter is self-explanatory, Councilmember Winter, your name is first here, so I will let you make any comments.
Yeah, I mean, as Mr. Rubin mentioned, we, we did in our last meeting, we made our boards and commissions appointments, I think rightly decide not to reappoint a couple people who had not completed their ethics training, only to find out that when we did not reappoint a member of the Urban Forest Task Force, that arguably, that ethics training had been completed. There may have been a communication glitch, not pointing fingers. And so the mayor and I, when we both acquired about the possibility of expanding the task force to give an opportunity for that individual, and perhaps another, given we want to work on this private tree ordinance to apply for, to be on the task force, found out from the city attorney that actually, its original charge in 2012 meant they would expire in 2019. So that maybe we ought to reconstitute the Urban Forest Task Force, so they can get to work on the private tree ordinance, and all the other great work they've done. So it was sort of good timing. So hence this motion, which is to officially reconstitute the task force with a charge for seven more years, and the original charge plus the private tree ordinance, and expand its membership from seven to nine.
All right, moved by Marina, seconded by Himmelrich. I think we need a roll call vote on this one. Yes, we do. So we'll have a roll call vote. Madam clerk?
Councilmember Marina?
Yes.
Councilmember Himmelrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Winter?
Yes.
Councilmember Har?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Day?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. That passes unanimously, six to zero. Thank you. It moves us on to public input.
Public comments permitted only on items not on the agenda that are within the subject matter of jurisdiction of the city. State law prohibits the city council from taking any action on items not listed on the agenda, including issues raised upon, I'm sorry, under this agenda item. And we have four members of the public who wish to speak.
All right. All right, I will call out the names, and again, we'll ask you to line up along the wall, so we can move smoothly. Denise Barton, David Morris, William Myers, and Gray Bright.
Good evening. Let's review some of the things that have happened since I was here last. June 26, 2019, elderly neighbors' key fob did not work, and they were unable to access their unit when they returned home in the evening. I tried to find the resident manager, William Brown, but he was unavailable. I tried calling, contacting the police for assistance, but they never came. The resident manager came back two hours later and made a comment to my elderly neighbor about locking herself out, to which they corrected him, telling him to look in his left hand where their key fob was, that didn't work was, and had been given to them by the resident manager three and a half weeks before. Then June 27, 2019, building management had powdered Fabuloso, put heavily on the carpet on the floor that my, and my elderly neighbors, elderly neighbor live on, to which we both had negative health effects from. Fabuloso has an environmental rating of F, but I couldn't get assistance from the housing authority, code compliance, the health department, or hazardous materials. Denise McGrannahan of Legal Aid did write a letter for me requesting that it be removed from the carpeting in the hallway and discontinued the use of. Yet Sierra Corporate Management, aka 1318 Second Street Associates LLC, only seem to be continuing to use it and refusing to remove it from the carpeting in the hallways, as well as I'm having problems with my washing machine again. And finally, you insist on keeping public input at the end of the agenda. I guess you need to be sued, like Orange County, by the ACLU before you do the right thing. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Barton, thank you. Mr. Morris?
Good evening. I wanted to talk concerning some issues. About 15, 16 months ago, Xena Josephs, one of our advocate citizens that advocates for some of the homeless individuals, had brought to your attention about a woman named Geraldine Schuler. She was a handicapped woman, 70 years old, with chronic emphysema, and had lived at San Michelle for 18 months. And after finally getting a voucher for the city of Los Angeles, due to the fact that there was no progress for an apartment, she went back to Las Vegas and went back onto the street. My concern tonight is concerning an issue that I brought before you last month, that we might help in conjunction with the staff and OPCC, Ms. Sweeney, this widow of a veteran who was decorated, who is no longer here to protect his wife, and who has been on the street for months, and months, and months, and months. And I have tried to help her. One of the reasons I was exited from San Michelle is because I actually tried to help two clients at the access center, and they felt I was encroaching their territory or something. I can't stand to see some of these people that are the weakest and most vulnerable, day after day, in front of me, out in front of San Michelle. I can't do that. So I'm pleading with you guys that you would get together again with OPCC, the staff, and reach out to get her an emergency hotel voucher. I know that in the past, they've given them out for 30 days, and they've been extending them for another 30 days. It's taken till today for her to actually make an application for a voucher. She made this application today. But the way they operate there, it's going to take months for her to get into an apartment. So I'm asking for you guys to assist this person and other vulnerable people in this position. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Just so you know, I met Ms. Sweeney outside, and I have her information. I will give it to staff, so they can look into assisting her.
Thank you.
William Myers? Oh, I guess not. Gray Bright. Mr. Myers, I apologize, sir?
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. My name is Gray Bright, eight-year Santa Monica resident, peer board member, and I've now been in a Fourth of July parade since earlier this month. And tonight, I'm here to talk to you about after-sunset visibility. Whilst our major roads have streetlights, a lot of our residential streets lack overhead illumination. Combine this low-light situation with the simple red LED light on a scooter, and we've now located a very specific problem within the new mobility ecosystem, after-sunset visibility. By analyzing the limited available scooter injury data and public input, it appears a portion of injuries and many complaints relate to this lack of after-sunset visibility. Drivers express that they don't see scooters until it's almost too late, and scooter riders express concern that they are nearly being hit, sideswiped, or simply feel endangered by cars coming too close to them. But you do not think that I would present here tonight without a solution for you. This is my latest product development. It's a backpack with built-in battery, Wi-Fi, and a matrix of 64 by 64 RGB LEDs. But do not concern yourself with the science of the product. Simply bathe in its brightness and rejoice in the solution, for this is the solution to after-sunset visibility, a bag that can be seen, understood, and save lives. I'm not requesting action on my public input. I would welcome any comments regarding ways to support this product. Maybe there is a safety committee, or a ride-share office, such as with Kyle Cozer, that I should make contact with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. And I know that, that is very bright, by the way.
If the car's coming at you, and you're on that side of the road, the car's then on the wrong side of the road coming at you. Do you know what I mean? On a two-lane street, you should be going on the side closest to the parked cars. Oh, yes, yeah. No, we've got a bigger problem. If cars are going the wrong way down a street, that's, that's disastrous. No, this is purely, I rode here tonight, and going, I live on Third Street, but like near the Montana end. Going down the dark, cars come along, and sometimes they don't see riders. So I, I get about with this bag, and I can feel the distance between cars has increased as they're driving near me. Just to, just wanted to let you guys know about it.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. We appreciate it. And I'm sure our listeners on radio, or watchers on TV, will appreciate it as well. All right, that concludes the public input. Unfortunately, council, we do have an adjournment. We discussed it earlier this evening. We are adjourning in the memory of Tyler Skaggs, a lifelong resident of Santa Monica, and a starting pitcher for the Los Angeles Angels. He passed away on July 1, at the age of 27, 12 days shy of his 28th birthday. He was born in Woodland Hills and raised in Santa Monica. He attended Roosevelt Elementary School, Lincoln Middle School, and graduated from Santa Monica High School in 2009. During his time at Santa Monica High School, Tyler participated in a number of different sports, including baseball, football, and basketball, and he excelled in them all. In 2009, Tyler was drafted in the first round of the Major League Baseball Draft by the Los Angeles Angels, I hate that term, Los Angeles Angels, as the 40th overall... as the 40th overall pick. Tyler made his Major League Baseball debut in 2012 with the Diamondbacks, and returned to the Angels during the 2013-2014 offseason, where he remained an important starter for the team. Tyler would always make time to give back by actively participating in numerous Angels community events, and he frequently returned to Santa Monica schools to engage with students and student athletes. Tyler married his wife Carly this past December, and they recently purchased a home together here in Santa Monica. He was loved by all who knew him. Many people knew his mother, who was a softball coach at Santa Monica High School for many, many, many years. The family has been active in the community for decades. And so speaking on behalf of the entire Santa Monica community, we convey to his family, his friends, and his loved ones our deepest condolences. And as I mentioned before, in his honor, we wear our Tyler Skaggs ribbons tonight, but we'll carry them in our heart always. So with that, we will conclude. Our next meeting will be August 13th, and we will see you all then. Thank you so much.